Medias reconvene with all members present. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
A motion to approve the minutes of, executive minutes of December 12th, 2011.
I move that.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Landrigan.
Abstain.
Mrs. Vitale.
Abstain.
We have a motion to approve the minutes of January 9th, 2012.
Mayor, I move that.
My second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto.
Yes.
Dr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Links.
Yeah.
Mr. Catalonello.
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan.
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale.
Yes.
Alright. Part of the greetings of public, we have a couple of proclamations and a major recognition to do, so I will come down below. Is this Alice Stein, your librarian? No, there we go. I should've seen the hat. A great tradition here is the, to recognize Read Across America, which was March 2nd, 2012, and of course, the cat and hat is a key part of, uh, and I should have this completely rhymed, but I don't, so I'm not saying. Whereas, citizens of Borough Madison stand firmly committed to promoting reading as a catalyst for our students for future academic success, for preparation for American jobs in the future, and their ability to compete in the global economy, and whereas Madison is providing significant leadership in the area of community involvement in the education of our youth, grounded in principle that educational investment is a key to the community's well-being and long-term livelihood, and whereas NEA's Read Across America, a national celebration read, will be conducted on March 2nd, 2012, which would have been the 108th birthday of Theodore Seuss Geisel, better known as Dr. Seuss. Whereas, Read Across America New Jersey is conducted statewide by the New Jersey Education Association in partnership with the New Jersey State of Living Municipalities, the New Jersey Library Association, and a local affiliate across the state to promote reading and adult involvement in the education of our students. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the government body, call the citizens of Madison to assure that every child is in a safe place, reading together with a caring adult on March 2nd, 2012. Further, I enthusiastically endorse NEA's Read Across America and Read Across America NJ, and commit our community to engage in programs and activities to make America's children the best readers in the world. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Stein, I'm the school librarian. He is a specialist at Central Avenue School in the cap. All the children's librarians across New Jersey, especially tonight, I'd like to thank you very much.
As though I don't have a cat and hat hat, I will talk about, one of my other hats is that, as a member of Madison Rotary, as part of that meeting, Madison Rotary Club will be going out to the elementary schools in Madison to read to the second graders, so we're looking forward to doing that. And if I have James, Kazimbo.
Here.
And playwrights, any, come on up. All our young playwrights. Uh, the hand there. And this is, the proclamation proclaiming March 2012 as Madison Young Playwrights Month at Playwrights Theater, Madison, New Jersey. Whereas, Playwrights Theater founded in 1986 has nurtured creative writing skills for all ages throughout New Jersey, throughout the New Jersey Writers Project, a co-sponsored program of the New Jersey State Council on the Arts of State, and whereas, the Playwrights Theater has produced performances and offered new plays to the local and statewide audience as a result of the dedication of its respective playwrights, and whereas, Playwrights Theater brings a unique program to the community through its local in-school playwright initiative, the Madison Young Playwrights Program, and whereas, Playwrights Theater will present the performance of a student-written work during the Madison Young Playwrights Festival to be presented on Saturday afternoon, March 17th. Put that on your calendar. Whereas, the Playwrights Theater has continually received a positive response from students, teachers, and the parents for its effectiveness, and working with all students, many of whom have realized the benefits of self-discovery and expression through playwriting. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, mayor of Borough Madison, on behalf of the government body, hereby proclaim March 2012 as Madison Young Playwrights Month. In doing so, I extend the best wishes to Playwrights Theater and to all the young writers within our community for continued growth and success. Further, I implore the public's participation to attend performances and commend our young playwrights for creativity and artistry. Say a few words, and then we can have our young playwrights give their names and the name of their production, their good play.
I just want to say, you know, writing a play is hard work. It's very personal. It's also very public, um, so with that in mind, we certainly congratulate the five playwrights whose plays will be presented. It's also important to point out that these five represent fifty-plus students at the elementary and junior school level who also wrote plays with us in the fall, and three classes of high school students who are also right in place with us this time. We commend them on their creativity, their imagination, and their dedication to this work, and look forward to bringing them to life, and are very honored that they entrusted us with their ideas and their voices. And thank you to parents and schools and the entire Borough Madison for making this possible. Without your encouragement of these students, we wouldn't be here today, so thank you very much.
Out of the nice play voice, like, production voice, give your name, and leave your name with, like, playgroup. Have another one?
Um, Catherine, now I'm a playwright, I wrote, it's not too bad.
I'm Kelly, that's why I have a private pseudonym.
I'm Molly Sullivan, and my play is from D.C.
I'm Kevin Scritto, and my play is Isn't It A Dream?
I'm Alec Yola, and that play is actually pretty cool.
So don't forget, March 17th, before you go out to green, if those see their plays and many others at Playwrights Theater. Do we have Madison football players or representatives of the team, any audience?
They're all outside, Bob.
I was gonna say, it does look like right here. You got four come here, coaches come here, Molly off camera. At our last meeting two weeks ago, we honored girls volleyball, soccer, and the marching band, and now it's our honor to recognize the undefeated, two-season undefeated state champion, uh, Madison High School football team. Having grown up in Madison, there's two things I remember, many things I grew up remembering. One is a great team we had many years ago. Uh, one is growing up in the early seventies, the rivalry between Madison Summit, which was dominated by Willie Wilson at the time, and two men, Matty and Mattson, was a, um, Summit resident, so it was great to see that our two championships went through Summit, and it is quite a streak you have had. And the other thing I want to recognize is the legends we grew up with, and for years people heard about Deep Dillibol, and the records that would never be broken, and this year, my junior, Justin Goodwin, those records are broken, so that puts in, this was late early sixties that Deep Dillibol's, uh, career was here, so that's quite an accomplishment. So, as you read the certificate, we will hand it out. The mayor and council hereby congratulate the members of Madison High School Dodgers varsity football team for achievement in winning the second consecutive NJ, SI, AA, Northridge, Rooktown state championships on January 2nd, 2011. This accomplishment required extraordinary effort, outstanding teamwork, and dedication and perseverance, dedication and perseverance. We commend the team members for their commitment in reaching this goal, and recognize head coach Chris Klubek and his staff of skilled assistants for their leadership in training and coaching. The dedication and achievements of these outstanding athletes have brought great pride to Borough Madison. In testimony of appreciation, I hear unto the central unit field of the Borough Madison. And we'll, uh... Alex Kern. Justin Goodwin. Carson Lassiter.
Not here?
I think it may be out here today.
I'm calling up this man.
Sam North.
I'm calling up this man.
Mitch Magalista. Jack Farah. I'm on a roll here. Matt Holger. Alex Stein.
Why don't we just ask them who they are?
Darnell Saint Germain. Curtis Hutter. Jamal Saint Germain. Steve LaFerrera. Dylan Flue. Matt McDonald. Sister was here two weeks ago for soccer. Ben Anderson. Dave Kirkland. Mike Chaconos. Chaconos, sorry. I practice this ahead of time. Peter Motzenbecker. Gino Loquino. Noah Gruber. Matt Richards. Connor Higgins. Tom Peppas. Pat Collins. Justin Ruel. Steve Finelli. Mike Iron Arrow. Michael Finelli. Will McCall. Jason Hall. Kevin Power. Matt Miltzer. Michael, or Mike Surtacio. Michael Bungdarter. Nick LaBarra. John Young. Joey Affelo. And hopefully I called out everyone, um, and we'll, you know, hope he's sort of saying to give us a coach. Coach Klubek, do you want to introduce your coaching staff?
I have two here, Tom. Gino Loquino.
Our world champions, but it's been hard, it's been hard for our team all year. Great job. I'll be back here.
Thanks, brother, for helping these kids.
We will, uh, I appreciate the fact that people had to wait for some seats. Let people come and grab some seats as we come along. We'll talk about the agenda in a few minutes. You'll see the work agenda consists of just one item, and that is the budget final adjustments, so we'll be discussing that. I just, uh, we'll give, uh, a few minutes for people to come on in. I pretty much have covered my greetings to the public. I will talk a little bit more about the agenda shortly. At this point, I'd like to, uh, call on Dr. Esposito. Would you like to make a statement?
Um, yes, mayor. Thank you very much for giving me this opportunity to make this one and only statement. My life has been turned upside down in one fell swoop. I have been wrongly accused, and I am not guilty of any of these unjustified allegations. I will fight for my family name and my honor. I am humbled by the support of so many friends, patients, this administration, the mayor, and my fellow councilpeople. It has been very helpful for me and my family. I will not give up. Thank you for listening to this very short message. Thank you.
Joe, would you make a few comments about, just, people that want to talk about this, I just want to ask our borough attorney to comment.
Right, it would be inappropriate for the mayor or a council member, um, to comment at this time. Dr. Esposito's made his statement. It's only an accusation. There's no reason he can continue to function as Borough council member, um, and so, I don't think that it would be appropriate to address any questions to him, uh, about that issue. And I've publicly stated before, and I'll state it again, it's only a charge, and so, there's nothing to do about that unless and until it's more than that. So, the answer is, he's a functioning council person, just like the other ones.
Thank you, Joe. Reports from committees, public safety, Ms. Tsukamoto.
Yes, thank you, mayor. Um, I have both a productivity and a crime information report from the Madison Police Department. Uh, the department, in the month of February thus far, responded to nineteen hundred and fourteen calls for service, and their officers responded to and investigated forty-one motor vehicle crashes and have issued two hundred fifty motor vehicle summonses. They made thirty-one arrests and made one DWI arrest. They have also responded to and investigated forty-eight alarm activations and made four hundred eighty-two various premise checks. In terms of crime statistics, in the month of February so far, the department have investigated twenty-three burglaries and/or theft complaints, one aggravated assault in, under investigation, and has three stolen vehicles. Of the thirty-one total arrests made, seven were for narcotic violations. Um, they have also made aid-warned arrests and three arrests for motor vehicle theft. The department wants to ask the pub, wanted to ask the public, the department would like to ask the public to be vigilant, lock cars, doors, and windows at night, and report anything suspicious to the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito.
Um, yes, thank you, mayor. In 2012, the Madison Community Pool will be celebrating its forty-fifth season. Uh, even though it's only three months away from our, the opening day of May 26th, they are accepting new applications online for both residents and after this week, non-residents if there is room available. Uh, the applications will be online, um, at madisonpool.org. On February 24th, 2012, the Madison-Chatham joint meeting had their preliminary budget meeting, and the preliminary proposed budget will be, um, will see a reduction for Madison of three point six-three percent, uh, and the savings of that will total around thirty-seven thousand dollars. So, um, kudos to getting together with both Madison and Chatham, uh, we come up with some savings along those lines, so, uh, thanks for all those members that are involved with that. The, um, from the electrical side, there has been some, uh, beginning of pole and cable reconstruction on Winland Road and Green Avenue for the intersection widening and road resurfacing. Final poles were removed from the Danforth Road, so the county can complete their construction along Park Avenue. Riser poles are being erected at the 22 Main Street, which is in progress, that's where the new building is in the corner of Main and Greenwood, uh, and riser pole constructions will begin very soon on the Greenwood Avenue Circuit. On the planning board side, um, there are two things, two subjects that we'll be discussing. Uh, one will be a case of a redevelopment and, uh, construction, a reconstruction on Elmer Street, and the second is a discussion on the, um, concerning the LED gas, uh, station lights that have been, uh, coming up to kind of fine-tune the ordinance that are related to that. Madison's new waterline protection program is now available. In the last several weeks, over seventy applications have been received and processed. Uh, this is a voluntary program that is available to Madison homeowners. Applications are available on rosenet.org or on a table at the entrance to the council chambers here. Thank you, mayor.
Public Works and Engineering, Mr. Links.
Oh, thank you, mayor. Uh, I have a few things. One, uh, the MRC, or the Madison Recreation Complex, is closed. We have signed up that they're closed because there's so construction on the site. I would really appreciate if everybody stays off, there's a lock on each gate for a reason. Thank you. Um, as far as the budget, as it pertains to the MRC first field, I met with, um, the DPW, um, the head of DPW, actually talked to him today. The total cost for one year to maintain in-house the field is twenty thousand dollars. Ten thousand for the turf and ten thousand for the grass to be cut. It's also a very big budget, so there are no need for additional funds. One more. The third annual Madison Green Fair is scheduled for Thursday, May 3rd this year. It will again be located downtown in front of the theme of British trade and craft. The fair is being organized jointly by the Madison Environmental Commission and also the Madison Boys' Galaxy 25. If there are organizations or vendors interested in participating this year, uh, they could email greenfairno break at rosenet.org. Thank you, mayor.
Finance Borough Clerk, Mr. Catalonello.
Thank you, mayor. I have several comments regarding the budget. Would you prefer, mayor, that I report them now or wait until you introduce it?
Yeah, as, when we introduce the, uh...
We'll introduce the budget, I'll make the comments. No, no report other than that, sir.
Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, Senior Advisory Committee, the annual tax program has begun and runs by appointment every Wednesday through April 11th, drawing twenty to twenty-four clients weekly. Volunteers from the ARP Tax Aid Program provide free assistance with federal and state income tax preparation and e-filing. Dr. Prouse Peabody, the director of the Florham Park Institute for Long Life Learning, for lifelong learning, will speak on opportunities in adult education at FDU on Monday, February 27th at 10:30 a.m. And Zumba Gold begins Friday, March 20th, March 2nd with Andrea Plakatis, a YMCA instructor. Uh, they will be adding gentle yoga at the end of March, and Tai Chi, healthy bones, and bowling continues as it does with line dancing, which now meets three times a week. I know my wife would like to get me in some of those, but I'm not doing it. Okay? The Time of Your Life will be held at the Madison Civic Center on Saturday, April 14th. Uh, the morning begins with keynote speaker Betty Dangler discussing positive responses to issues of aging at 10 a.m. Participants will then... Participants will then proceed to the Great Room and speak with local agency representatives with the event ending at 2 p.m. Okay? And finally, from the DDC. The Downtown Development Commission is once again organizing May Day in Madison. This year, the event will be held on Saturday, May 5th. You'll hear a consenting gentler in that regard. Residents are encouraged to assist in the beautification of our downtown and public spaces. Last year, almost a thousand volunteers pitched in to help plant flowers, clean the downtown, spread mulch, and clean parks and other public property. And students who are interested in submitting artwork for the T-shirt contest should also contact 973-822-3900. And the last piece of information I have to report is this, the waverly clock has not been stolen. Thanks to the financial support of the Downtown Development Commission, it is in the process of getting refurbished. The DDC will be donating over $3,500 to help replace the clock faces and gearing. With the help of DPW and the Electric Department, the clock will be back downtown soon. Thank you, Mayor.
Health, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. As part of the five-year strategic plan, the Madison Board of Health will survey restaurant owners in Madison regarding the inspections they receive from the Health Department. The survey deals with questions regarding the timeliness of inspection, the frequency of inspections, the explanations for violations given, timeframes to correct violations, and other customer service orientated questions. Purpose of this survey is to give feedback to the Board of Health on the perception of inspections, which are required by law. This information will also lead to potential improvements in service delivery support for business owners and protections for our residents. If you have any questions and you own a business downtown, you know, you could call John Hoover is, who is the President of the Madison Board of Health, or you could reach him on a rosenet.org. I want to emphasize that this is a Board of Health that made this decision. It has nothing to do with the Health Department and their staff. So, this is going to be strictly confidential and work through the Board of Health. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you. Any communications or petitions?
Yes, Mayor. We received several emails today regarding support for library funding. I'll just read the names we received from Pauline in Stafford Drive, Carol Scheschler of Spring Garden Drive, Lorraine Figarelli of Central Avenue, Maureen and Joseph Hagerty of Albright Circle, Denise Katz of Parkside Avenue, James Kemp of Wayne Boulevard, Pauline Bliss from Spring Garden Drive, Sarah Chapman of Morris Place, Marilyn and Ken Miller of Stafford Drive, Rosemary Dinhop of Albert Circle, and Judy Honahan from Glen Dale Road. Also, an email from a resident regarding the repairs to Green Avenue from Stephen McCain on Green Avenue. This resident.
Thank you very much. Okay, this is invitation for discussion, one of two for the public to step forward. This is your opportunity to discuss anything that is on the work agenda or any resolutions listed. And a reminder that there is only one thing on the work agenda, and that is final budget adjustments, so we will take comments on that or, again, the resolutions as you step forward. Please, if you're going to speak on a resolution, tell us what resolution number it is or the topic of that resolution. And I think it'll be obvious if you're speaking on the budget. Keep in mind, we have another opportunity to speak, and as has been in our process during budget hearings, is we have taken breaks at appropriate times to receive comments. So, I will probably need to cut the discussion short if we're extending to too long, and I'm hoping to keep this to fifteen minutes, and it'll certainly be holding the fifteen-minute limit per person. And certainly, if you're in the audience and you hear someone saying something you agree with, it's not necessarily, it's not appropriate to cheer or jeer any comments, but you can nod your head or you can shake your head, and I think that will tell us plenty. At this point, and a reminder, when you step up, state your name, your address, and print the same on the sheet. And I heard from a local resident that we've got to remind our speakers to speak right into the microphone so we can catch it on tape. And while I'm speaking of tape, we have a, we're switching over how we presented on the web, so the recent council meetings may not be on the web immediately, but they are still being broadcast on cable and FiOS in the traditional manner. So, with all that said, is there anyone wishing to be heard? Raise your hand. Mr. Sorsiello.
Sam Sorsiello, Park Avenue. Just on three resolutions, I'd just like to ask. Resolution 72, are we getting a new auditor or a new company or something?
The, what we'll be doing is appointing the current auditor to take care of 2011 audit and to get us through the 2012 budget process. We will be, we had another finalist we'll be bringing back for interview to probably take over the 2012 audit and going forward. It's one of the best practices, recommended best practices, that you change the audit auditor on a interim basis.
I agree with you. That's good. Resolution 76, cancel an ordinance there. What was that ordinance about?
That is canceling the, that's the Green Avenue?
Yes, Green Avenue.
Okay, yep. And we're reordering the ordinances. The first one will be to reject all the bids for the south part of Green Avenue because they all came well outside of the funded part. And this is to rescind the funding ordinance for Green Avenue. As has been mentioned many times in this room, is Green Avenue is one of the few roads in Madison that would be eligible for state funding. So, the goal would be to go out to get state funding and do that project at a later date.
Resolution 78, rejected the bids or something?
Right, so that's the one I just mentioned, that all the bids, because they were well outside the budget.
Okay. You know, just talking to a lot of people in Madison, you're talking about the sound system. You know, I understood when we renovated the place, it's going to be a better sound. A lot of people just love to watch what's going on in this council on the rosenet there, but the sound system is worse than it was when it was the old.
I don't know about that. I think we've come a long way.
All right. I've talked to a lot of people who have it. So, I just suggest that you just talk into your microphone so people can understand when they watch, because a lot of people complain, they just don't understand anything.
Yeah, but that is a good reminder. The feedback I got from the resident this morning was not only the person at the podium, but some of the council members, even, we do have our little reminders now, speak in the microphone, but we will have to make sure we speak right into the microphone.
You're the biggest complaint, Joe. Talk into the mic.
All right. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Dave?
Dave Carver, 29 Bellow Avenue in Madison. Just a quick comment. I read the Madison Eagle this week, some of the capital budget plans, and actually, I'll quote Councilman Cattinello. "The North Street Pump Station is number one repair project. If we don't get it done this year, we'll be swimming in feces." Now, when you read that in the paper, you go, eh, it sounds like typical politician's hyperbole, right? Is he really exaggerating to make his point? And I just want to let him know how much we appreciate his comments. Because the North Street Pumping Station, you see, having a house full of sewage is not theoretical to my wife and I. It's reality. It's after Hurricane Irene last August, the storm sewer, the sanitary sewer in our neighborhood collided. Sometime in the middle of the night, the toilet in the first floor of our house became old faithful. So, we woke up in the morning going, oh, right, no trees down, no flooding outside. We're good to go. Then we walked downstairs and discovered our house was flooded from the inside. So, five months, many thousands of dollars later, our first floor is back to normal. A little bit better. Took advantage of the opportunity to make it better than what it was. You know, if you get lemons, you make lemonade. But we hope it never happens again, and we just want to encourage the council that in tough times, you've got tough choices to make, and they are choices. You've got to figure out how you're going to spend your money. Sewers are not glamorous, but they're really important. And from personal experience, we really said, you've got to get this stuff fixed, not only for us, but for our neighbors, for everybody else in town, because until they go bad, you don't know how bad they go. That's all. Thank you.
And I know there's other people wishing to be heard, because I saw a way in the back there. And then over on the left will be next, so you can line up behind.
Sandy Colikowski, 136 Park Avenue. Just a couple of observations from what I've seen on the budget meetings so far. I thought it was, you know, I was very impressed by the effort that all the employees and departments made in trying to bring in budgets that I thought, they tried to keep them modest considering the type of climate that we're in right now. So, I just thought they should really be commended for that, including the library. I know it's difficult to keep reworking budgets, and I think they've done a great job on that. One thing I was disappointed with during the budget meetings was the decision to ask for new job descriptions from all the employees. It seemed to me to be a counterproductive time to do that. Usually, you do job descriptions when you're doing standalone performance reviews, and it just seemed to be a funny thing to tack on to an already difficult budget cycle, and I just wanted to mention that. And lastly, although many people have tried to assure me that it is a good idea, I'm so concerned about the S&amp;P outlook, and I worry a little bit still, although people say it's a really worthwhile project to do. I just wonder if we're absolutely sure that we should do the meter project now rather than wait until some of the reserves have really built up so that we can hopefully get them to turn, change their forecast back to neutral on the town. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh-oh. Is it glued to the table? Oh, the computer's on top of it. I think we know who you are. We'll make sure we get, all right, there we go. There we go. All right, thank you.
Jane Reynolds, 119 Greenwood Avenue. I would like to speak in behalf of the library budget. I know that these are very difficult economic times, but I go to the library often, and when I'm there, I see how well utilized it is. People of all ages and types doing many types of studying and chores and research there. And I also believe that a town is often judged by its library, and I know many people who examine both the school system and the library before they choose a town to live in. We have a great reputation now, and I would like to maintain that by continuing all the support that we have given to the library in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? All right, seeing none, we will get to the agenda's discussion, which is final budget adjustments. Just want to make a couple of quick remarks, and then we'll hand it off to the Chair of the Finance. Just as a reminder, that just as with all the other meetings related to the budget, it is still a work in progress. A lot of emails went out over the weekend with some maybe accurate information, some inaccurate information, and may have led some people to believe that things were set in stone, and that is certainly far from the truth. We are working on the budget, and the goal tonight is to make those final adjustments so that a budget can be introduced on March 12th with a final hearing of March 26th. Mr. Cattinello, would you like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to kind of give an outline of how we came to the point we are. Two Fridays ago, I worked with the CFO, Robert Califfitt, on the initial budget, or at least our, my initial budget submission. We wanted to design what we called the bulletproof AAA budget. We were very concerned, we shared the concern of some of you in the audience, and Sandy as well, who just came and spoke about S&amp;P having us on negative watch. So, as a result, we put together a budget that we felt would address the concerns. And the two main concerns of S&amp;P were that we continued to spend down surplus and that we were not taxing enough. And as a result of not maxing the tax bank, is what they called it, meaning, you know, taxing to the absolute maximum that the law allows, we were reducing our flexibility for the future. As a result, the initial budget that we came through with included over, an over three-and-a-half percent tax increase, which was the maximum that was allowed by law. It reduced the surplus that we would carry every year, and it replenished a bit of the capital account. So, that was, we felt as though, you know, that was a very strong bulletproof way to get our, you know, to get our rating back to neutral. AAA, you know, neutral, stable. In the next week, while I was on vacation, my backup and Council President, Genie Sukamoto, actually started to do some work with the CFO. And then last Friday, we all met here. Jim Burnett, Robert Califfitt, Genie Sukamoto, and I spent a good five or six hours reviewing the document, and a couple of things came up. Number one, there was concern that a three-and-a-half percent tax increase was too high, given what's going on in the economy, in the job market in the Northeast, things with gas prices, et cetera. That would equate to about a $100 per year tax increase on the average house on the municipal side. So, the average house is taxed at around $10,000 or $11,000 a year based on valuation. We were also concerned that perhaps we were taking, we were reducing the surplus too much and that we weren't funding the capital account enough. Please keep in mind that this year, we're projecting to spend over a million dollars on capital and essentially draining it. So, wrestling with all these problems, we decided as a group that we would call S&amp;P and actually share with them what we were doing, what we were thinking, and try to get some non-binding feedback from them as to how they would, you know, they would view what we were doing. So, you know, we actually were able to speak to them, and we relayed the fact that we wanted to reduce the surplus that we carry every year slightly, but that the plan was to maintain that surplus for three, four, or five years. We wanted to increase the capital account, and that we wanted to increase taxes somewhere between two and three percent. The unofficial feedback that we got from the rating agency was that those actions would be viewed positively. So, we took that to mean, you know, that if we did this, you know, we have a very good chance of maintaining our AAA and actually being taken off of negative watch and moved back to stable. It was a very rigorous approach. It was a very disciplined approach. We held the CFO's feet to the fire, and we asked him for his three standard deviation worst case, so ninety-nine and a half percent of the time, what is the minimum surplus you'll be able to carry over a year? He gave us that number, we incorporated it. We looked at, we tried to project out how much money we would need for capital for next year, for the roads, and we funded that. The initial budget submission that we had at three-and-a-half percent fully funded the library, but there was still a question regarding the community house. I've seen the emails too, and I know that a lot has gone on, and I know that good-meaning people who are very passionate about the library maybe sent something out that they didn't mean to, and, but then those same people actually did the right thing, I believe, and after learning more, came back and sent another email out trying to explain where the first one may have been wrong. So, I appreciate that. As it pertains to the current budget, when we went home, we instructed Assistant Borough Administrator Jim Burnett to come up with an interactive spreadsheet that would allow us, in public, in a very transparent way, to show the town and the residents and the taxpayers, if in fact, we decided to fund other, you know, other projects, how taxpayers, if in fact we decided to fund other, you know, other projects, how it would affect, if we decided to fund it only through increased revenue through taxes, what that would do to the tax rate, or at the same time, if we could identify cost savings, how we could fund things like the library, et cetera, without, you know, without raising taxes. And we were able to work together over the weekend and we felt as though we have identified cost savings that would enable us to fund the library so they would not run a deficit this year. Unfortunately, as it pertains to the community house, it was brought to our attention that the funding of the community house may actually have been in violation of state law. So we actually asked for a legal opinion over the weekend. That's why, over the weekend, there was no funding for the community house in this budget. It wasn't because there was some sort of, you know, vast right-wing conspiracy or there was a hit list, which I saw, you know, in some of these emails, that the, you know, that these were on. And in fact, it turns out that it is illegal for us to fund the community house. It violates New Jersey State Constitution. The borough attorney has issued a, an opinion on that, that we will be happy to share with anyone who wants. So unfortunately, in this budget, we can no longer continue to pay for the utilities for the community house. And we are all very saddened by that, but it would be illegal to do so.
Just a clarification, in the current method of, right, there is other ways to provide support for a partner agency.
Right, but in the exact way that we're doing it now, absent a, an agreement that we couldn't, we searched the clerk's office, it would be illegal to do so. So in this budget, it's been left out due to the interpretation, not because it's on some sort of a hit list or something. With that, we have, you know, we have the budget. It comes in at a 2% tax increase year over year and like I said, it, you know, with the cost savings we identified earlier, that we'll speak about later, it funds the deficit that the library mentioned they would have based on their projections for the budget. And that's where we have it.
Just, I don't have the sheet that was distributed over the weekend in front of me. This is the version that was, came out in our packets.
Right, this is Catalonello Lite, because it's only 2%, not 3.5%, 3%.
This is the version.
Yeah, this is the last version that came out Friday.
Where we worked on as of 5:00, Friday afternoon.
So this is the version of the budget that we consulted S&amp;P on, on Friday, and this is, this is where it comes out.
Perhaps the best thing to do at this point is for Jim to go over some of the assumptions and comments and along with Robert, to kind of talk through this with the public so everyone will understand what we're looking at.
Thank you. As, thank you, as Councilman Cattinello mentioned, as you can see from assumption one, and I apologize, this is as clear as we can get it, I'll read it off that Cattinello is correct, we spoke with S&amp;P on Friday and they issued favorable comments on the assumptions and to talk about that at greater length, but if you look at, I should put my glasses back on, I apologize. If you look at this number here for utilities, you'll see 356,000 jumping to 734,000, obviously utilities, and that's the electric utility, are being treated totally differently. In essence, every borough building, or almost every borough building, with the exception of any that are under lease agreement, are going to be billed at electric rates. So this building, we will actually be billing ourselves for this building, for DPW and alike. And in addition, there'll be some other items that the governing body needs to discuss. They need to discuss all these items. One in particular that came out, that I just have down here and there's obviously room for other comments, is that during the discussion of the budget hearing, the first budget hearing, the first presentation by David Maynes of DPW, he mentioned need for additional funding for MRC maintenance. David and CFO and Ray Cody did an excellent job scrubbing the budget, found additional funds. David had asked initially for an additional $40,000, but through excellent review of the budget, they were able to find the $40,000 necessary. So that's been funded in the existing budget.
I don't accept, no, it wasn't $40,000, it was 20. It was 20.
20,000. Yep, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize, it's 20 for the Brian, 20 for the, we do have those assumptions here and maybe Robert wants to come up and talk for a few minutes about some of the assumptions and Jeanne, do you think, Rob, do you think it's appropriate to discuss adjustments at this point? There was some discussion.
Jim, before you go on to there, can we go back to the last sheet? There's some, a couple of things I think I want to make clear, so if I can point to the numbers, I think the, because some, the rest of the council members were not there during the Friday discussion and that might be more clear as to what Rob was referring to. I believe there are two contributing factors with regard to the surplus, right? One is that top line over there, over here, right? This one over here. If you look at this number, okay, well, anyway, this number over there, if you look at that number, $885,000, that is a number of, it's actually a very major reduction in the use of surplus with, as compared to last year, right? And we really believe that we'll be able to sustain the use of the surplus at this level, the $2,750,000 through 2014, meaning this year, '13 and '14. What this means is that we will no longer be using more surplus than we generate for that year in the next couple of years, until that our new electric contract starts in mid-2014.
We stressed with S&amp;P that we felt that we could maintain that number for the next three to five years.
That's right.
And that was a major factor that they cited in putting us on negative watch, the fact that we kept on spending down surplus. So we arrived at this number basically by, you know, kind of beating up, you know, the CFO, Robert Califfitt, he should be used to it, he's a Jet fan after all, so, you know, and basically demanding that he tell us what, you know, what is the absolute worst-case scenario, 99 and a half percent of the time, that he felt as though he could generate, and this is the number we agreed on, and this is the number we vetted with S&amp;P.
Yep. Thank you, Jim.
Okay. There are some outstanding questions and some discussion items that have been brought by department heads as well as by elected officials that we can discuss. Do you want to discuss that now, or if you want to go point by point on the budget as it stands right now, we can do that as well. Open for suggestions on how you want to have this discussion.
We can do stuff such that open items, because eventually we have to come back to the sheet and do the additions and the subtractions.
And so the.
May I interrupt for one second? We've spent a lot of time talking about this AAA rating and for those of you that aren't necessarily that involved in finance or don't care, the reason that AAA is important is a couple of things. Number one, in New Jersey, I think there are less than 10 towns that enjoy a AAA rating. Number two, a AAA rating allows us to borrow much more inexpensively than a lower rating, say AA, single A, something like that. Considering the amount of debt that we have, most of that's already locked in, but the need for future borrowing, okay, will be greatly affected by our credit rating. And I know when people hear the word "future borrowing," they think, "Oh my goodness, you know, what have we done now? What are we spending on?" The next amount we're probably going to have to bond for has to do with our, with the joint meeting, the sewer joint meeting, where they need some capital repaired on quickly. So we may actually have to go to market and borrow in the next year or two. So it's important, right now, you know, depending upon the day of the week and what's going on in Europe and all sorts of stuff, the difference between a AAA and a AA rating can be between 25 or 50 basis points, so a quarter or a half a percent. So that's why we took it so seriously. Plus, we pride ourselves in being one of the very few towns in New Jersey to enjoy this AAA.
And just to add to that, this is the number of that surplus for prior year surplus and also we would like to keep this number at this level from the electrical surplus, right?
Okay.
Though that number, the 3.5, does not affect the Standard and Poor's credit rating. That could fluctuate.
I'm sorry, the question was on the electric.
The transfer from electric does not necessarily affect our S&amp;P credit rating.
It just represents revenue to the borough, Matt, and we have, and Robert can talk to it, over $4 million in surplus, but the goal is, similar to the municipal surplus, to not be drawing down any more surplus than we're putting in. We oftentimes use the bathtub analogy where there's the drain out, which is going to the budget, and there's the water coming in or the funds coming in. Same situation with the electric utility that we target, obviously it would be an unsustainable model if we were taking more money out than putting in. So the goal in talking to S&amp;P and with this budget was sustainability over the long term.
And if we stabilize the surpluses through 2013 into the second half of 2014, there's a high probability that when we start to procure wholesale electricity at much cheaper rates, you know, things will loosen up a bit. Now, future projected surpluses are just that, they're in the future and they're projected so we can't count on them, but really, the goal here is to try to stabilize our surpluses for this year, next year, and going into 2014. And then after that, if all of a sudden we enjoy windfall, well then everything gets much easier, but we, it's important to design, you know, and here's the electrical engineer in me, it's important to design for the, you know, the worst-case scenario, and this is what we tried to do, while keeping the tax increases as low as possible, given what's going on in salaries, jobs, you know, cost of living, et cetera.
So the goal with this document is, and the discussion this evening, is to have the council discuss various other items that are still on the table and we'll actually make the adjustments to the budget document right here so everyone can actually see the impact, positive or negative, on whatever decisions that you're working on or deciding. So I know that there's some that are out there, I don't know if you want to start talking about some of the adjustments that you want to make.
Certainly, well, I can certainly do that. And Rob and I have worked on these recommendations. Since I was the one who took notes, I'm going to report on the items, okay? One of the additions that we feel that we would need to do is an additional police officer. Considering the, there are serious public safety concerns out there, based on a joint report provided by both the police chief and the fire chief a few council meetings ago and also some subsequent council discussions, it will be our recommendation to add an additional police officer. Based on the salary of a probationary officer plus a 40% benefit low on top of that salary, considering that this is not for the full year, I computed the number based on eight month salary for this police officer, it will cost us $46,000 for the remainder of 2012. I don't know, Chief Trevino, I believe he's here, is he? Yes, he's here. I don't know if he has anything to add, but based on our discussion, I believe $46,000 for a police officer should be added.
And I, Mayor, I don't know how you want to handle this, if you want me to actually put it in there, if you want to discuss item by item, I can put it in there.
You have another spreadsheet?
Yes, I do.
Perhaps that's the right place to add it.
It doesn't have the full load in there, the calculation's slightly different, we can certainly change that better than here. Make the $46,000. These are the items that we had initially discussed as passengers. What you can see there, and I apologize, Councilman Link is correct, the MRC facility for $20,000 and Brian for $20,000 additional purchases, however, with the good stewardship from the DPW, CFO and Ray Cody were able to offset that $40,000 increase with these three $40,000 decreases in snow removal overtime, part-time help and standby pay. So these, those particular items in the middle, where I'm highlighting the cursor, are essentially revenue neutral and they won't even require an adjustment to the actual budget document that we were looking at previously because it all comes out of the same pot.
Perhaps the way we should do it is we, it's easier if we make decision along the way, so, so the way that I will handle this is, if I may go back to the top, Mayor, is I move to add $46,000 to the current operating budget.
Actually, I think we're better off with, at least as we go through, get consensus, but not until you get to the final thing, final budget, not to.
Okay.
So I think this has been discussed already and the police department has been given authorization to advertise a position, so I think we have had consensus on that position.
But we never, well, the portion that was missing from our prior discussions is I actually find the money for it.
Yep.
So I think it's important for us to, you know, one way or another, we need to, I thought that this way we can, anyway, so how do we make consensus? Everybody okay with it? Is that, would you like?
It's also, remember, this is a work session, so things may change as we go along. We're not, by the end of tonight, our goal is to have a budget ready for introduction, but we won't be voting on it. There's going to be some pluses and minuses to stop at every one and take a vote, I don't think it's necessary. Again, I think we have the consensus to put that in there.
Okay, we do? Everybody okay with it?
Can I ask you a question? You put your $46,000 in salaries and wages, have you taken into consideration the health insurance benefit?
That's a fully weighted.
That's what I said, that's the loaded 40%, yes.
Okay, in the 46?
That's not a 12-month weight, but that's.
It's $49,000 salary plus a 40% low for eight months, and that will come out to be $46,000.
And I'm just, for simplicity's sake, dropping that entire $46,000 into the salary item instead of splitting up the salary and help, but the budget impacts the same one. I'll do it, if you're okay with this, Mayor Conley, I'll put it down under recommendations so you know what's been added and then we can go back and take away or change or whatever.
So for those keeping score at home, don't hold us to the line numbers, but hold us to the subtotals, that's what we're working towards right now.
Would you go back to the slide with the MRC and the police officers on it? When you talk about road supplies for the MRC, what exactly is that?
That is, and maybe David Maynes, if he's here, can discuss that more clearly, but I don't think it's appropriate, state road supplies, it's just additional supplies for the MRC. There's a need for some equipment to be used there to be able to maintain the field.
The reason I asked the question is because we have rubbish cans and we spend $20,000 on a rubbish can. I have no concept what that means.
When road supplies consist of six different categories under that supply, it goes roads, parks, it even specifies what fields that it takes care of too. If you look in the operating budget, it may have a dip in your book, I don't have my book with me.
Road supplies mean, in this case, $10,000 to cut the grass and $10,000 to maintain the turf for a year, is that what you think?
The $20,000 we have is $10,000 for maintaining the turf and $10,000 for miscellaneous stuff.
Okay, so that is that $20,000?
Yeah, that's what that's for. That's added to that line item.
Yeah, I'd be, take road supplies, I mean, come on.
While David is here, Don, I just want to mention one thing that you did mention to me the other day, that you would like to add $23,000 to salary to address some staffing issues that DPW has.
Yes, the staffing issue that I have down in my garage is, we have one secretary's been out for over a year, over a year, and she may not be coming back at all. And then we have where one secretary's been carrying a workload for the last year, year and a quarter, she's going to be off the books as of the end of May, beginning of June, right now, and that's what's happening.
Part-time support.
Yeah, we're going to start with part-time support and after, yes.
I did speak to David about, I highly recommend that we do do that.
So that's $23,000?
Or was that in? Was that in?
They're both fully out there. Both positions are fully funded.
Both positions were funded fully, so it's actually would be a. But, but both positions were funded fully, so it's actually would be a move in the other direction.
Are you saying adding twenty-three thousand? Are you saying adding twenty-three thousand or not?
We, we, we have two full-time positions funded, and so there would be a reduction and not an addition.
Just one point, one thing. We, in, in addition to what's already in there, we feel as though the, we're pretty stretched based on some conversations we've had, and that, you know, we may need to actually rearrange the staff or, or potentially do something in terms of part-time. So, we wanted to give the DPW the flexibility in case of natural disaster again, or another horrible, horrible weather season, to act, you know, to, to do something on the staffing side. So, we actually wanted to incrementally put, this has nothing to do with the secretaries, some more money towards staffing as they address the manpower needs in the department.
You know, Rob, I've had staffings over the last couple of months with David's group. I've also met with David and Jimmy. The issue to me is that we need a part-time admin, I got it. But what we really need is another headcount. There is no flexibility with those guys as is right now. So, I was like, oh, good.
We agree, that's why we, that's why we think we want to add, you know, we wanted, we wanted to put some, some money toward it.
I was wanting to let you know that you have to.
So, as it stands right now, that position is fully funded, but we're in the process of advertising for a part-time position for the administrative help for the DPW. So, there is some potential savings there, which we could drop onto the spreadsheet if you want to, or if you want to hold off on that, to give DPW some more flexibility, we can do that as well.
Right.
The estimated savings would be approximately thirty thousand dollars, and I want to double check on that, so.
Yeah, okay.
I would say for the purpose of this exercise, we're doing worst-case scenario, I would throw the twenty-three in.
Over what's in there.
Yeah.
Don?
So, we're adding twenty-three thousand?
To DPW's salary?
Yeah.
For something to be named later.
Apologies for the tediousness.
Okay. Should we go on while you're typing?
All right, next.
Next item, next item is the library. I think many of you are very interested in this particular item. The trustee at our last budget meeting gave a presentation, as Rob mentioned, that, about their budget. And we all are very concerned that the library will have a deficit of eighty-one thousand and thirty-two dollars. I believe that was the number given to us, right? And if we discontinue utility subsidy. So, despite the rumors, I don't know any member of this governing body who is not supportive of the library. And I believe that we really value the library, want to support the library, and we need to make sure that there will not be a deficit. And now, if I remember correctly, based on the library's presentation, that was based on a hundred twenty thousand for the full year, correct? And now, since we're two months into the, the year already, I believe funding of eighty-one thousand dollars to the library will make sure that you don't have a deficit. Is that correct? Right, eighty-one thousand.
So, so in essence, reducing support by forty thousand, or is it, or is it the?
No, actually, we're adding, what I'm proposing.
So, it's no, no charge of utilities up until budget adoption date, and then they, they get?
I think that's just about eighty-one thousand dollars.
All right, we, we would need to do the calculation on that.
Here's the deal, we can shave a couple bucks either way. What is the difference?
That's right. We can calculate exactly what that number is. The reason that I'm picking a number right now is I would like to add that to this line item here. Instead of the mill rate, I would like to add that number there, that's why I picked the number eighty-one thousand dollars.
Jeanie?
Because we believe that will be.
Excuse me, I have the library presentation right here. It's eighty-one thousand thirty-two dollars would be their deficit. So, it's right here.
So, so I would suggest that we add that to this number over here. Exactly, just add that to that line item.
Zero, three, two.
And Tom, if you can.
Yeah, my, my, my suggestion would, my suggestion would be to add the, a flat value for the full annual utility that they're currently paying, and then add an offset amount to the transfer from electric utility, because the money would be going in and the money coming back out. What that does is if they initiate some energy savings measures, they will enhance their bottom line. If they use more power than they've used last year, they will end up paying extra. But it, it shows the true cost of running the library, but gives them the support to pay for the electric. And it is kind of money in, money out.
Mayor, I understand what you're saying, however, to be consistent with what we've asked other departments to do, which is to run it bare bones. You know, if this eliminates their deficit, which it does, then I think that's a fair number to put in right now. You know, if we can identify other monies later on, like you said, this isn't stone, that's a possibility. But I would say for the purpose of this exercise, we keep it at what they need to eliminate their deficit. To be consistent with what other departments are doing.
Though, my definition of bare bones would be that no FTE additions are happening. So, we've already, you know, we've made addition to public safety, we've made addition to public, public work. So, we're not necessarily saying running on bare bones, we're, we're doing some areas on bare bones, some bones and a little skin.
Well, that assumes that you feel that the other departments were overstaffed to begin with.
Well, I see, I disagree with the statement with regard to the Police Department, because I think we were less than bare bone. That's why we're adding the police officer to that department. I think we already have that discussion in executive at the last council meeting. And the next item on my list is, there was some discussion about the teen center, but we never really discussed the teen center. I just want to make sure that the budget actually included twenty thousand dollars for the teen center. I want to make sure that everybody's okay with that appropriation, since we never, it was at the end of one of the council meeting, we never talked about it, and I thought that it would be only appropriate to bring it up here for us to have consensus that we're actually going to fund the teen center.
It, that, that is correct, that it is included in the funding. We did receive correspondence from the YMCA that they were going to be receiving some grants to upgrade their teen center. One of the reasons for, the purpose of them getting the grant, one of the reasons was because of the partnership that they have with the Borough of Madison. So, we did receive correspondence to that, and as of, and, and it is included in the operating expenses.
So, we have consensus to keep that in, is that what we're saying?
Absolutely. They, they did us, I think, a big favor by taking over our teen center.
Well, that is a very nice shared services, you know, from the government with another nonprofit, so we want to continue that.
Mayor, fundamentally, I don't have a problem with the teen center, I don't. But I also have, but I do have a problem, because we have no idea how many kids we are serving. Is it one, is it a hundred, how many when there's one?
Um, since I have a dual role, it would be inappropriate for me to discuss that. We can either, I could ask someone at the YMCA to provide it, or I, I do notice that the teen director is, is in the audience. She can address some of those.
That's right, I'm not saying we don't need, I'm saying, are we paying for something we don't need to pay for? That's my question.
I will talk in broad statements, I probably shouldn't, maybe I should even leave the room, but, and any partnership, that, that is a valid question, and we, we should be providing, and certainly.
And I would also suggest we keep it here now, defer to some of weaknesses.
The same can be done if we change the way we support the Community House, is, you know, making sure we, we understand where the, the dollars are going and what we're getting in return.
Okay, the, well, yeah, well, did you have another spreadsheet behind here that you had some items? Was there any leftover from there?
There's the one item with regard to the Health Department, if you recall, they came, they said they were able to drop their one line item by three thousand dollars. They were able to drop that, but however, they needed additional funding, or they were requesting additional funding for legal expenses. So, you'll see on this last, these last two line items here, overtime for the Health Department, reduction of three thousand dollars, additional legal fees, an ask of twenty thousand dollars, so there would be an additional seventeen thousand dollars if you entertained this request, added to the operating budget, if you wanted to entertain that request.
Can I, can I speak on this?
Sure, you're the liaison.
One of the items in Mr. Hoover is here, who's President of the Board. One of the items is seven thousand dollars that is paid to Peter King right now as the attorney for the Board of Health, okay? And he takes care of resolutions, he comes to the meetings as well as, as you know. There are currently two serious litigations. And last year, what happened was because of these two litigations, one is quite serious, the other one is from out of town. The Board of Health had to come to the Borough and ask them for another sixteen thousand dollars. By requesting this twenty thousand dollars, what we want to do is, the Board of Health is autonomous, we want to make sure that we're keeping a good track of what's happening with those, with those legal items coming up. So, we're requesting the twenty thousand dollars so that we can keep better track, and we don't have to come back to the Borough in another six or seven months and say, hey, listen, we need some more money for this particular litigation, so.
What is, since I don't have the big book with me, Jim, can you look it up? How much, do you know, maybe Carmella, you know how much that, that the Borough paid for? In terms of legal fee last year?
I think it was sixteen thousand dollars. Was it, was that right, right?
Twenty-four, twenty, sixteen plus the seven thousand.
Yeah.
Last year. And how much did we budget it already? Perhaps we already budgeted something this year, and we can just transfer that over?
No, we didn't.
We didn't?
Yeah, we budgeted equal amounts last year.
We did budget that?
No, we budgeted just an equal amount to last year, which, and they're asking for an additional seventeen thousand dollars on top of that.
So, how much did we budget, twenty-four this year?
Yep, I'm verifying that, I believe that's correct.
But, but that line item also includes professional fees for adopters, lab costs, miscellaneous services, and not just exclusively legal. It's professional services, of which legal is one component.
Yep, and we funded the same as last year. Mr. Cody is correct about doctors and other, per diem nurses that are included in the professional services line item. When it's broken down, it's broken down with smaller, a smaller portion of that for legal.
So, are we saying that if, if we're going to give the additional twenty thousand dollars to the Board of Health, then we should reduce what we have that, that we need to spend out of pocket from the Borough side? Or am I not understanding this?
No, no, it would just be, just be an additional seventeen thousand dollars added to our operating expenses to entertain the Health Department's request. There's no offset on any other side, there's no offset on our legal fees or any, anywhere else.
So, so the legal fee will be paid out of the Health Department, and it will no longer be paid out of the Borough? Is that what we're saying?
It's, there, there will be issues if they go past the budget. Bills, bills have to be paid.
Correct.
And it could come from year-end shifting money, but obviously, as the Health Department is semi-autonomous, they have their separate board, but we control the funding to a certain extent.
What will the council?
We, we kind of have no choice, right? We need to pay legal fees, right? Is that what we're saying?
We gotta pay the bills, yeah, we gotta pay the bills.
I, I don't know that the Board of Health has the option to go back within their budget and find seventeen thousand dollars extra.
Is there?
We, we, we did, we did a lot of research, and what we're working on is, is basically revenue right now. And that's going to be an important part of our budget going forward. But right now, you know, we, we did, I think Mr. Hoover did a good job taking a look at that, and so did James Norgalis. I mean, that's how we, we gave back, you know, I, I know it's not a lot of money, but it's three thousand dollars. You know, so that, that kind of proves the point that we did look through the budget very carefully.
And we are hopefully going to very shortly, potentially, I want to really couch my words, lock in an additional contract for shared services with the Board of Health that will potentially offset that expense. We don't know if that contract for a shared service agreement with another town is going to happen or not, so we can't, we can't budget for it. So, if that were to happen, that would fall into miscellaneous revenue unanticipated, and help fund anything next year in their, in their budgets, or help reduce their operating expenses in future years.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't recognize that revenue unless the contract is signed before we introduce the budget. So, we're just leaving it out entirely?
We haven't come to an agreement with that municipality.
When do you anticipate it happening to be signed?
Uh, I can't, I can't say, obviously, their governing body has to make a decision. We have a meeting with them tomorrow evening. So, and then their governing body has to actually, as, as you would, have to ratify the execution of a contract. But their, their current service provider, it's, it's not going to be something that happens tomorrow. It's probably something that happens May or June of this year, because they need time to unwind, and we need time to transition, we need time to ramp up.
Yeah, I would not even count that.
Correct, but, but it could, it could potentially, six months or, a month from now, we could be reporting that we're anticipating an extra thirty thousand dollars in net revenue to the Board of Health for that contract.
Rob, when you say that, absolutely, you're right, we can recognize that revenue, because if the contract take place after today, right? But however, if they do have the contract, we, that will go into our surplus. The revenue will go into the surplus for the year. So, that's a good thing.
Absolutely. Remember, when we were designing our missiles, you know, for the first Gulf War, we made sure they got where they went, so they didn't wind up somewhere in Iran. So, I'm just, you know, I'm going back to the old Tomahawk Cruise missile days, and we're trying to do a worst-case scenario, okay?
And with the process, it's moving along nicely with this municipality, but you never know when a, a governing body might, might do.
Okay, so, moving on to the next.
Wait, wait a second.
Just one issue, in terms of the animal control contract for the Board of Health, we didn't talk about that. In the budget, we, we previously had a contract with St. Hubert's for forty-six thousand two hundred dollars. Board of Health did a great job negotiating a new contract that has a cap of twenty thousand dollars with Milburn and Livingston, same level of service to our residents. And we put in to the budget, to be very conservative, that maximum figure, the not-to-exceed figure. Our actual experience year-to-date, from January first to February twenty-seventh, we spent a hundred dollars. So, we've got twenty thousand dollars in there for costs that we're not incurring, and I think a reasonable position could be some middle ground to try to address some of their requests for, to recognize a portion of that for these ongoing legal bills that we know are going to be a certainty. It's pending litigation, it's a matter that's ongoing, we can't just avoid the costs. Whereas they've already, you know, we're overly optimistic or cautious with the way we budgeted for the, the cost of that contract.
That sounds great. So, we funded twenty thousand, and Robert, I just heard that we accumulated more surplus again. This is good.
Okay.
Ray, Ray, are you suggesting that, are you suggesting that we should maybe put in ten thousand dollars?
I'm suggesting you alter it and at least.
So, so we, given the fact that we're not going to, we don't think we're going to be able to expend the full amount in the animal, animal control side, that we could put ten thousand dollars in here, assuming that we could move some of the animal, animal control funding over to the legal side. That's one option, or if you want to be very conservative, we stick with putting the full.
I'd prefer to stay with.
I would, I would, I would stay where.
Yes, I agree with Carmella, full freight, yep.
Okay.
Move on, move on.
Okay.
Okay, the Community House, so I believe this version of the budget actually. Yeah, the, the twenty thousand, was it in or out of this version, Robert?
I can, I can explain, this version of the budget assumes that the Borough would be. be receiving an extra $100,000 on the revenue side, and given the fact that notifications may not be going out till later, that, that $100,000 is on the electric surplus side, but it's not on an operating or expense side, so if you're looking to fund via a grant or something like that, the Thursday Morning Club, that, that additional funding would need to drop to, would need to drop on the.
No, that's not the question.
Was the $20,000 for utilities included in this budget?
No.
No, okay.
No.
So we have to. The legal opinion.
Well, well, the, the 20,000 for utilities would not, for the Community House would not appear here because they would not be paying the borough for utilities, nor would do we have to budget for the utilities, they're still start, they would start paying the electric utility for it, and in a separate line, you could have a support based on an agreement for services rendered for the Community House.
Where does that, where would that show, Jim?
That would show here where we'd have an extra, let's, let's say $15,000, I believe it was $12,700 for the electric, for the Community House last year, so if we add, let's say $15,000, to be conservative, $15,000 would be added to this line item that's highlighted, and then, ooh, what's going on?
Yeah, you got an open formula there, so.
Yeah, that's my formula, sorry. $15,000 would be added to the electric surplus line here, and then we would add.
Department operating.
Department operating there, $15,000, so it would be a net.
I think it's actually already included in, I think the $15,000 is already included in the 3.5. Because, yeah, because we were waiting, we didn't do anything, we were waiting for the legal opinion, yes.
So it's still there, it's still there, is what you're saying? No.
If we, if we add $15,000 back, we'd be double counting.
Oh, okay, because it's still there. Yeah.
So that is, if you wanted to fund, with the correction from the CFO, if you wanted to fund, fund this through a grant program, the additional funds would have to be dropped onto the operating side, so it would have a small impact on the amount of property tax that would have to be raised. Is that something you want to entertain?
If I could just say a few words, you know, as, as far as Thursday Morning Club is concerned, and Rob and I had a little brief conversation about being passionate about things, Thursday Morning Club happens to be one of my passions. There, this is a club that's run, that Madison Community House has been in existence since 1924, and the Thursday Morning Club has run that, that house and by fundraising, by donations from the Thursday Morning Club people who work extremely hard, there's 268 members and they work very hard at fundraising and doing what they can to keep this, this house going. Now, what does that do for the Borough of Madison? Between 60 and 65,000 people on an annual basis walk through that door, they're mostly all nonprofits, I ask, you know, I, I carry a list with me because I'm always astounded by the amount of people that are using that from Girl Scouts, I mean, they're a charter Cub Scout, like PAC 124 or whatever for a lot of years. They, they're running after-school programs, they're, and not once, if, if the Little League comes, all of their board meetings for every single recreation department and, and is held there, that's just one item. Many of us use it for lots of other reasons, and never once is there a stipend that's off, asked because we're, you know, Thursday Morning Club is 5-on-1 C3, so a donation is, is usually the way that money is, is given. It's never asked for, and lots of times donations are not given, but in order to keep and supply this wonderful advantage house to the Borough of Madison, I, I think it's the least that we can do. I think their electric runs about $12,000 a year, and I think their water probably runs about 851, and I think that's where you, you get your $15,000. And I think because we don't have an agreement, and I, you know, I was surprised when I, I saw that, I, I think what the agreement has been over the years is just good faith, and it's just progressed, you know, all of these years. So my suggestion would be is to keep that $15,000 intact and come to some kind of an agreement, as we do with the Early Trades Museum, it's in their lease that we're paying, we're subsidizing them. So I'd like to ask Joe's opinion that, you know, if we could set up some type of agreement, $15,000 is not going, it probably is only going to make a difference about 90 cents in anybody's tax bill, so I, I think I, out of respect for what the organization has done for the town and what, what they have supplied to the town, that I would like to see that $15,000 kept in there.
So the concept is we would add $15,000 to department operating expenses, and it was the comment that we already are showing, the, in the transfer from electric, you were assuming making $15,000 more, it's, it's, the reality is when you get to the $15,000 level with electric.
We weren't, we weren't showing the transfer from electric, we intentionally, we didn't do it because we were waiting for the opinion, so I think it is, go ahead.
We never got any money in.
Yeah, we never got any.
So if we're going to give them money, and we're going to get the money in, it's going to be a cash control.
Right, so, so we could, we could add, we could add it.
Fifteen to the top, fifteen to the bottom, I just wanted.
But is that, Joe, can you, is it okay to do this?
With, with agreement?
You know, with an agreement and with something coming back to the Borough of Madison, it's okay. The opinion earlier was that money was being paid with nothing being received by the Borough of Madison, and the New Jersey Constitution says you cannot give money in aid of an organization or society by way of gift or donation, so forth, with public funds. If you've got an agreement and there's something being received back by the Borough of Madison that's reasonable in that agreement compared to the cost, then yes, you can do it.
And, and we already, in the, in the teen center, we already have a model for that, so I think it'd be fairly easy with the Community House to come up with the services, you know, what, what they provide, as Ms. Vitale pointed out, what they provide for the borough is well beyond this, and so I, I think it'd be fairly easy to come up with an agreement that justifies the support. I think Don had, or you're covered now, okay?
So just so I understand, the money's in there effectively, so it's just a matter of drawing up an agreement so that it stays there, and this, what Carmella's requesting, will not change these numbers?
We, we could add the fif, we, we.
It's going to be a plus and a minus, puts a net zero effect.
Yeah, it's in the.
Okay, we need to, what we're proposing is we're going to add fifteen to that, and then add fifteen to that.
And just so you know, since.
So it will balance out.
And just so you know, Jeannie, since this isn't a full year, if you're okay with that, I think it's more appropriate to probably add $10,000 because they're going to get X number, unless we try to build that from January 1 and I don't know what our meeting reading situation is, so I would just say that we're going to fund the Community House for a full year, we'll give them a $10,000 grant this year, we'll assume that the billing will be about $10,000.
We can't give you.
Not another grant.
Not a grant, so, so we're, we're.
The contract was drawn up before this budget's introduced.
Yep.
So if we're all confident we can do that, then.
The, the contract will be a annual services for $15,000, but a pro, prorated support for 2012 of $10,000 for the services rendered as, as will be described in this contract, that will be worked out between the Borough Administrator and the Thursday Morning Club.
I, I certainly can live with that, it was a long tradition.
Yep.
And as long as we're not breaking the law, I'm happy, right?
That's right.
That, that's a good thing.
So Carmella, bring something back, perhaps next council meeting to just make sure.
You'll have it this week, you'll have it this week.
All right.
You never met those Thursday Morning Club people, they, they built a whole, a whole wing with $2.5 million they raised themselves, they'll get it done.
Going to the next item.
Thank you.
Regarding legal fees for the borough, I believe it is reasonable to believe that we can reduce our total legal fee by $30,000 this year, based on some of the discussion we have, right? We went out for RFPs for legal services and we came back and we're in the process of awarding contracts, and looking at the current numbers we have, I think $30,000 reduction of legal fees will be a reasonable amount.
Okay.
Is that good?
Yep. Okay, consensus on that?
All right. Okay. Okay, and. In our executive meeting earlier that we discussed management consolidation, and so I want to make sure that whatever we talk about following is purely for financial reasons, we're not talking about any employee's performance review, so I would like to, oh, based on Mr. Mazaka's advice earlier, I would do this in form of a motion that move to abolish the purchasing agent slash HR officer function to create purchasing officer position and to authorize the administration to start the hiring process. So that was the motion.
I would second that motion.
And what we will need to do for the next council meeting, I believe, Joe, that's what we talked about, is we have to come back with resolutions for each one of these items, is that correct?
Yes.
Discussion? Okay, roll call on that one?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Go ahead.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes. Okay, now the next item is in case you're wondering what happened to the personnel and officer function, right, that we just abolished from that purchasing personnel function. This one is regarding the CFO function. I move to add HR duties of pension, health insurance, employee savings plan, dental insurance, and employment verification functions to be added to the duties of our chief financial officer. That was the motion.
Second.
Discussion?
We have discussed this with Mr. Califfat, and he graciously, graciously accepted those additional responsibilities. So what we need to do at the next council meeting, Joe, is that we have to come back to formally do this through a resolution, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, we. And Ray, feel that that is doable as far as current responsibilities with the CFO and adding these responsibilities?
Robert will need some transition time, but the, the executive team will help him get to speed, so I believe it would be, yes.
Roll call vote on that?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Calonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes. With regarding to the director of technology position, in our discussion, we feel like this is a perfect opportunity for outsourcing, however, this requires quite a bit of work, and, but what we will do is, as the liaison to technology, Mr. Calonello will work with the director and look for outsourcing opportunities for, for the technology, not just for the position, but for the entire department.
Right, and it's not necessarily just outsourcing to a, you know, to a, a, a small firm or something, we're actually going to try to partner with a major technology supplier, you know, someone like Apple or Samsung or IBM, in an effort to, you know, really do a landmark sort of municipal partnership with a technology provider, and, you know, hopefully we can be at the forefront of innovation as it pertains to a truly innovative, paperless environment, good, you know, good for the, you know, green environment, that will reduce cost. And this is not going to be an overnight sort of thing, this could drag on for over a year, we do have some good contacts with companies like this, and we will get to work on that as soon as the council agrees that it's something we want to look into.
The, I guess we should have talked about that bef, about this before we came out because this is for, has no effect on the current year budget, so we actually did not need to cover this at this point, but we have now covered it, so I guess we'll, we have a motion on the table.
No, that was just a discussion.
We, we don't have a motion, that's, thank you.
That's why it wasn't.
I believe it as a discussion.
Yep, thank you for.
That was just a discussion, right, I made that distinction.
Yep.
Yep, okay, now I have a motion to consolidate the administrator and assistant administrator functions to a new administrative position at an annual salary of $95,000 and to appoint Jim Burnett to the new position. That was the motion.
I'll second it.
All right, before, discussion, I will, first of all, we'll want to be very clear, we have now gone from budget discussion to what sounds like performance discussion because not only are you making a motion to consolidate positions, you are naming a position, the, the person to fill the position. As we are currently in the budget, we would, we would normally discuss if there's going to be a consolidation, we would then follow and fill that position. Also, by statute, this is a position that is a council, or mayor appoints with advice and consent of the council, so we're bypassing that. You're trying to take two steps with one, at one time, also, this whole process is, I, I have to say, is embarrassing. As you look at making budget, it is a difficult process, this is something that never stops. If, when we approve this budget next month, we will already start thinking about 2013. Every time a position comes open, we look at whether that position is justified. We have reduced the man, the FTE count in this borough substantially over the last five, 10 years without eliminating a single current position, it was all through attrition by looking at whether a position should stay or not. Here we are, the suggestion is eliminating, and I think every position should be looked at, but to name the person is far out, outstepping the bound, boundaries, to come up with this idea two weeks ago, at the end of the review for capital, to say, let's review all the positions, that is something that should have come up months ago. This is embarrassing for this town, this is a terrible way to run a business, and it's a terrible way to run this borough. And that is my thoughts, and if anyone else would like to share their thoughts.
I would like to ask Joe to address the legal issue of this.
Okay. There is a specific statute that covers it. It's NJSA 489-138, removal of administrator from office. It's very short, I'd like to read it because I think.
Joe, can you speak closer, we can't hear you.
Can you hear now?
There we go.
Okay, it, the statute is NJSA 489-138, removal of administrator from office. It's short, I need to read it, and I think the council then needs to discuss. The municipal administrator may be removed by a two-thirds vote of the governing body. Resolution of removal shall become effective three months after its adoption of the governing body. Governing body may provide that the resolution shall have immediate effect, provided however the governing body shall cause to be paid to the administrator forthwith any unpaid balance of his salary and his salary for the next three calendar months following adoption of the resolution. There's a provision of the Borough Code, Chapter 4, Section 4-2, that's exactly the same. The law says that the administrator serves at the pleasure of the governing body, so you need a two-thirds vote to remove the administrator, and you have to decide whether you want the resolution to be immediate, and if so, I need to read into the record a res, a little more formal resolution, although Ms. Sukamoto has already troffered one regarding the removal and then the appointment.
And Joe, regarding the appointment? And Joe, regarding the appointment, um, I guess my question is, can that be made at this point?
Yes.
And I would also like to add that, uh, this has nothing to do with performance.
And I would like to go over the numbers, if I may, first?
Well, and also that we, we spent a lot of time, as opposed to simply forwarding emails, we spent a lot of time this weekend working on this, trying to come up with the most effective budget that would maintain our AAA rating at the lowest cost to the taxpayer. Nobody does this willfully, nobody does this gleefully, this is a horrible thing, but this is what's best for the town, in our opinion. And I take exception, I take exception to the, the comment that this is performance-related, because performance was never discussed. It is, we are simply combining jobs. When you look at the job descriptions, there's massive overlap between the two. If you look at what's going on in terms of similar positions in other municipalities, in the county and state, most have one, very few have more than one. Our goal is to serve the residents, the taxpayers of this borough. We want to, we want to fund everything we, we need to fund, and we want to do it in the most efficient way for the taxpayer. It has nothing to do with performance.
In terms of the numbers, um, with a salary of $154,000 annually, with a 32% low factor for the benefits, um, that equates to a saving of $200,000 annually. In terms of this year, uh, the estimated saving will be approximately $100,000. So we're talking about saving $100,000 for this year, $200,000 from this point on, by eliminating a position.
And, I'm sorry, I'll hold off on my, Carmella and then Bob.
I, I just want to make one brief statement. Um, I'm a resident here, just like, uh, all of these people sitting here, and, um, I, you, you have no doubt my feelings about it, I made it, uh, known a little bit earlier. Um, I think one of the, the greatest assets that we had was when we hired Ray Cody, uh, to be a business administrator. He's brought a lot to the table that we would not necessarily have. So when we talk about what we are getting for our money, you know, we keep reducing services, it's down to, you know, one garbage pickup, now we're down to eliminating a person who has brought a tremendous amount, uh, to the table, and, you know, I'll, I'll just speak at, at the Board of Health, you know, um, the revenue that he has solicited in the last couple of years in order, uh, to help just one department, um, I do not think that this is in the best interest of this town to do, and I just want to make that comment.
Bob?
Thank you. I'll echo some of what Rob said, um, this isn't easy. But a few weeks, days ago, when we got our packet in the mail, all the job descriptions were in there, and I took it very seriously, because I know what we were doing. We were looking for efficiencies. You know, that's something that I, as a taxpayer, have experienced in my personal life, my children have experienced in their jobs, and a lot of my neighbors have experienced. You know, I know that, that information was provided just to bulk up the packet and for us just to look at. There was a purpose for that. And when I went through it, I said, yeah, there is a tremendous overlap here, and not knowing what everybody else had done, I'd identified that as well. Um, I'm not going to bring in any personal feelings or accomplishments of what any individual did, because that is a personnel issue. You're getting into performance, and that you can't do. Just in terms of strictly looking at the job descriptions, which is what I did, and I did in great detail, everything that the borough administrator position does is covered by the assistant borough administrator, and then some. So to me, and while other departments, let's say, have not had layoffs, which is true, they've, through attrition, been cut way down, so they've paid their dues. And when you hear a lot of people talk about smaller government, smaller administration, well, this is part, this is what you have to do. You know, it's not a pleasant task, but we've all been through it.
Other comments? I just want to reinforce a couple of things. One, let's start off with a budget conversation, and this is a budget that's, we're just moving numbers in and out right now. The budget will be introduced in the next meeting. The Borough Clerk corrected me in the fact that, um, by statute, we have to have 28 days in between, so it will not be the second meeting in, in March that is approved. So, the final budget could be rejected, it could be something different. Why is it combine the two positions in a budget and make the move at the same time? It is far more than a budgeting move, and I don't think you can convince me otherwise. Another thing we have to watch out for is, save, you've got the savings on paper, but unless you act, make these decisions right, you cannot, as I said before, suggest this two weeks ago at the end of a budget meeting, and then come back with two people's recommendations. Again, I ask the council to look very closely on how they deal with this. One of the things we do know, taxes, property taxes, are a challenge. It is not a Madison problem, it is a state. And what is worse than paying property taxes in the state of New Jersey is when you pay those same taxes and your services get cut, and the town you love is not the same one you moved into. Incremental increases can preserve what we deliver to this town without a, a negative impact in the long term. I ask, one, you should remove, withdraw the motion to make this position change right now. If you want to keep the consolidation in the budget, I disagree with that, but I certainly understand in the, in the text of this conversation that can go forward, to make two steps at the same time when we told people this is a budget hearing is wrong.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, over the last three days, I've had my opinion given out by someone other than me. Over the weekend, I won't bring this up, but now I'm tense. Over the weekend, I get an email about my position about the library. Someone called me, asked me what my position was. That's number one. Double two, Mayor, I respectfully disagree with you. I do not look at this as an individual move, but more to a job disgusted, not what it is, not the person, no, who I respectfully disagree. And again, within the last three days, I've had someone put words in my mouth, and that's how I disgusted. I really, if you want to know how I feel for myself, look, I'll be damned if you don't make up what I think when nobody asks me. Thank you.
Mr. Dr. Esposito?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, although I respect the opinions of my fellow, um, councilmen, um, I, I'm not very happy with the, the way things, uh, have been going with this. Um, I, I know it's, it's a budgetary issue, and we have, can't get any, any personal issues out of this, and I'm not doing it on a personal level, but, um, you know, Mr. Cody has been a, a great asset to the town of Madison. Um, he's done more in the four or so years he's been here than the previous administrator did in 20 years. He's never asked for a single extra dime for that, uh, and has always given back his raises. So he's not received a single dime of a raise. This, you know, I, in my personal opinion, and I believe, you know, and I believe with, with everyone here, that this needs further discussion. This is not a type of thing that we need to do today, it's not the time of thing, and it's not going to make or break this particular budget. We, we can consolidate 10 other positions if we wanted to, but a, at this stage of the game, I don't think we're going down the right path. And even if we do consolidate, is it to what cost? Is it the cost to us, is it the cost to the citizens of Madison, who Mr. Cody and ourselves serve to the utmost? Um, so, you know, I have to, uh, I respectfully disagree with some of my colleagues, um, but I also have to agree with the mayor and, and, uh, and Carmella, that, uh, this is not appropriate at this time, and I, I think we should probably sit back and take a look at it and look further, and maybe it could be done for 2013, or try to do something a little differently. Uh, but I, I just, I just don't agree with this at all. Thank you.
Further comments?
The, the difference in the tax rate would, would be significant.
A.
And, and, so let's, you know, so it is a budget discussion, because it greatly affects the budget, it greatly affects the increase in taxes. So by not combining the positions, we're looking at an incremental 50% tax rate over what was submitted, from 2% to 3%, okay? There are people in this town who can't afford it, can't. And you're going to go to them and you're going to say, pay more, because we, in addition to this, and it, you cannot look at this municipal portion i- in a vacuum. There's potential increases on the school budget. For anyone that lives in Madison that makes more than $250,000 a year, your federal taxes are going to go through the roof. So the tax burden on the residents of this town, it, are going to rise, increase dramatically. So, it, it, it behooves us to do everything we can to keep Madison affordable, okay, for the, for everyone who wants to live here. Like, again, I repeat, has nothing to do with performance, this only has to do with the budget. And trying to, trying to make it something that it isn't is disingenuous. This is a budget discussion. This is, this does not exist i- in a vacuum. This is in combination with what's going on in the state, okay, with what's going on in, in the country, as it pertains to taxes.
I think.
So the decision to wait, the decision to wait means that the tax burden that we are asking our residents to pay will be 50% more than if, without the co- combination of, of the positions, as opposed to, uh, you know, if we, if we were to combine the positions.
So, just, again, you may, maybe misunderstood me, that there are, we will have to, I think we have to separate these motions, there's three motion, three motions and one on the table. It is very clear, and I agreed, the combination of, combining the positions is a budget discussion, very appropriate for right now. Taking the steps right now is no longer the budget discussion, it is making an assumption that the budget will be passed. So it, it, it takes it to a different level. There was, I don't know, yeah, Mr. Rick?
I'm going to go out on a limb and say something, and, uh, this is obviously an awkward situation for me, I was unaware of it, I appreciate the council, um, that they have the faith in me to perform this position. Um, I do think that myself and Mr. Cody together over the last two years have been able to bring in, together as a team, over 1.4 million dollars, um, in revenue savings, some, some of which is, is still to come to fruition, the GVR pilot payment, um, of over half a million dollars, over half a million dollars of savings with regard to the health insurance change that we had, and, um, the joint court a- and other things, and I, it's, it is quite a big job, and I think the fact that we worked together, we were able to, to create those savings. I, I just want to offer that, um, obviously, um, I want to reiterate, I appreciate the council's, um, comfort level and my ability to deliver, um, and be the administrator, but, um, I, I just wanted to offer those figures to you.
Thank, thank you very much. Again, that reinforces the need to do our homework.
Mayor, I just have two comments. One, ahem, at the beginning, you said there should be no clapping during the discussion, so I think we have to keep the meeting at a fair level.
Thank you for the reminder, appreciate that.
Jim, you know, you're very gracious in the way you said that, and we understand the situation that you're in, um, but there comes a time when you have to also maybe think about other resources that you have at your hand. You know, like I said, this decision didn't come lightly to those who thought of it. Um, nobody here works in a vacuum, we all know the contributions everybody makes, we all know the resources that are available, and that's the way you have to look at this. You have to look at the resources that you have available to do your job. Thank you.
Other, other comments?
Uh, obviously, this is a surprise, but March 5th would have been my, or is my fifth year anniversary as business administrator, and this obviously wouldn't have been my first choice on how to mark that milestone, but, uh, I'd like to thank Jim for his comments, um, and Madison will be well-served by Jim Burnett, and if, if you do one thing, and if you listen to me on one thing, give him a decent salary, because $95,000 is an insult for what the responsibility he's going to be taking on. And irregardless of how you vote tonight, I'd like to thank Mayor Kerkaslaw, Mayor Holden, two Republicans, and Democratic Mayor Bob Conley for having been confident in me to nominate me and, and stay at a course with me, and for the governing bodies since March 1st, 2007, who have, I've had the honor to work for, including this body who reconfirmed my appointment, I thought through December 31st of this year, when they did that on January 1st, but we're now two months later, and I guess that's being revisited. I'd like to thank the department heads in the audience tonight, because I think they've been a great team, and Madison is also well-served by them, and will continue to be well-served by the department heads that we have the, uh, the good fortune to have, who are dedicated Madison residents, delivering a, a, a good work product day in and day out, and whatever you decide is your decision, I understand, I serve at the pleasure of the full governing body and I'm nominated by the mayor. And whatever decision is made, I would just pledge that I'll have an orderly transition period with Jim, or whoever you select to, uh, take the position if you decide to take that course.
Thank you for being so gracious. Can I follow up another comment about the impact? I did present a budget that showed an increase on the, um, utility transfer from electric, which was based on the library, uh, money coming in, um, I won't quote this personally directly, but it was mentioned tonight, um, that we, by eliminating this position, we can fund the library, and that's a shame to look at it that way. We have funded the library for years. What I request at this point would be, um, at least give me this respect, is to withdraw the motion as it is, because I truly believe it should be three separate motions. One, directed only to the budget itself, which is to do the budget with a consolidation of positions. The second one is the elimination of the current borough administrator. The second, the third one, I don't think you can do right now, because again, that's a mayoral appointment with, uh, council confirmation, and, um, it's, you know, this is just unbelievable to, to run it this way.
Can we ask Joe's opinion about this? Can we do it as one motion, and is it okay to include the appointment?
I believe it's okay to include the appointment. I believe you should probably have a separate motion for removal of the administrator, and another one for appointment, uh, of the borough administrator, uh, the assistant administrator, I mean, to, uh, borough administrator. And, um, I think the council has that authority, and, um, if the mayor doesn't appoint, the council can override it, uh, by a two-thirds vote. So I think you can do it.
So Joe, just make sure I understand, so I can revise my motion. You said to do the motion separately, or can I just, can the motion stand as, uh, as just three issues, um, that I pointed out altogether?
I think it can stand as you pointed it out altogether, uh, except I think you have to deal with the issue of, the statute says removals in three months unless you make it immediate, and if you make it immediate, you need to authorize three months' pay. And so you need to adopt a resolution that says it's immediate, if that's what your intention is.
Let, let's, let's, this is beginning to sound like a. Let's, this is beginning to sound like a congressional bill where you sneak in different parts of it. Do it in three separate steps. There is no reason to put it all together. Again, you are making a budget recommendation. Number two, you are removing someone, and number three, you're appointing someone. To put that all in one motion is a disservice, a theme of tonight.
Other comments?
We will, as soon as we...
Order. Order, Mayor. Order. Order. And furthermore, another point of order, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, you repeated a comment that was made in executive regarding the funding of the library and the co-mangling of positions, and it was take, and you took it out of context. Anything said in executive is privileged, and I would ask you to respect that.
But just...
In line with your own ethics committee, ethics code, uh, movement.
Well, just to clarify, what was discussed in executive now is now being discussed here. So it just, it changes...
Except the comments themselves are privileged.
Okay. So, yeah, we will, I think this is probably the last budget. I don't know if there's any other budget adjustments, so after this one, we will, because it is 10:30, regardless, after this one, I think it is appropriate for public comment because public deserves respect, so we don't keep them past the witching hour of 11:00 p.m. So can I please have a motion on the budget adjustment first, or a motion to withdraw the three-part one because minimally, we know that...
Joe, did I understand incorrectly that I must separate the three motions?
Why do you need them together?
If there's a no, if the motion can stay the way it is, that would be my preference.
There's no reason the motion can't stay the way it is, but you have to deal with the question of the immediate removal of the borough administrator and providing three months' pay.
And you can't appoint a new one until you've removed the previous one.
And so you can do it all in one, or you can do it in three. It's going to accomplish the same thing.
But I think it's far more appropriate.
So I will revise my motion to include the immediate removal of the administrator.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Discussion. Seeing none, roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
No.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that, Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattellinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
No.
Okay, at this point, we have no borough administrator, so as mayor, I appoint Raymond Cody as borough administrator. May I, asking confirmation from the council, please? Please.
Do you need a motion?
Yes.
I believe that we appoint Raymond Cody as our administrator.
And I'll second.
Okay, discussion. Roll call, vote.
Mr. Tsukamoto?
No.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
No.
Mr. Cattellinello?
No.
Mr. Landrigan?
No.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, we have a vacant position, and the mayor is not going to fill the position at this point until we, my recommendation is that we can review and do the best for Madison.
Just to follow up, the decision that we just made, we have to request Joe to work on, to work with the labor attorney on the separation details.
I will do that.
Thank you.
If we're seriously interested about helping the taxpayers, I don't think it really does, it doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to pay me for 90 days to sit home on Kensington Road. I would much prefer to work in concert with Jim on an orderly transition, come to work and earn my pay than to be sitting home. And so if we're serious about addressing a tax consequence here in the budget and the impact on our residents, isn't it better to pay somebody to come to work for 90 days than to pay them to stay home and not be productive to cooperate in a transition? I pledge my cooperation. I'll work in concert with Jim, any committee member or committee of this board. That's the way I've conducted myself for five years. I don't know why tonight would be any difference to be treated, in my opinion, with the disrespect to believe that for the next 90 days, I wouldn't hold my end of the bargain up, which I've done for five years.
Okay, we...
Well, I ask, I have to ask Joe for his opinion.
Well, by statute, we've already heard it can be either three months' notice or basically we pay him out. I think it's worthwhile to at least come back in the next, as you said, you asked for the labor attorney to opine on this, so let's get that for the next council meeting.
I was not asking the labor attorney to give an opinion. I was simply asking Joe to work on the transition details.
Well, let's, let's give it...
Well, you passed a resolution of removal. You've turned down a resolution based on the mayor's, the mayor's resolution to appoint Mr. Cody. You have to consider whether, having done all that, it behooves the government to have that individual working within the government for three months. I think that's the reason the statute's written the way it is. And so it's up to the council, obviously, but you can do it either way.
And we actually don't have a borough administrator right now.
The council can appoint one.
I understand. I just wanted to make sure people understand that.
And how do we, we appoint one through a motion?
You make a motion to appoint James Burnett Borough Administrator.
So moved.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
I make a motion to appoint James, Jim Burnett Borough Administrator.
That was part of that original motion already?
No, it was not.
Oh, you mean, we're doing it?
Peeled that out.
Second.
Discussion. I just want to mention my appointment before had nothing to do with Jim Burnett's performance nor my opinion of him. It just had to do with the way I think we should run this down.
Right.
All right, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
This is not a reflection on Jim, but no.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattellinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
No.
Okay, and it is now 10:35. Is there any other budget adjustments that are there? Can we just see what the final thing is, and I want to, within the next few minutes, open up for comments from the public? So what is the adjustment on this we're doing here? We're taking for 2012? What is the deduction from salary and wages?
Ninety, according to CFO, $90,000.
$90,000? And that counts the three months?
Yes, and the pension.
And assuming a new borough administrator takes it at the salary?
So Jim's salary is in here at $95,000?
Yes.
Is that right? Is that what he's currently making?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're, we've probably had some other adjustments. The goal was 2%, we're at 2.3%. Or was, is that what you...
2%. We'll have to go through it a little bit with a finer tooth comb.
So we don't, we don't need to do it right now. So we've heard the adjustments. There'll be some tweaking that will come up with a 2% increase or 2% on the tax, property taxes. And that is on the borough portion, so that pro-rata, it would be much smaller. At this point, I will open up the...
So we need to, if I may, so at this point, we probably should, we should move to have the CFO to make the final adjustment of these numbers based on tonight's discussion and to approve a tax increase of 2% for municipal taxes for the year of 2012. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
No.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattellinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
No.
And I guess, again, a reminder that this vote was just to make this the budget for introduction, so there'll be two more votes on this budget, even though action has already been taken on this budget. Next vote will be on March 12th, when it is introduced, and then April 9th is that the, for second hearing or final adoption. So at this point, yeah, just one.
There's, I just want to make, you want to make that? Okay. There are two possible ways to get to 2%. Mr. Cody and Mr. Calafat and I were talking this afternoon and scrubbing some numbers. Two numbers that we scrubbed were health insurance, really trying to fully calculate what would happen come July 1st when employees pay a little more. Through scrubbing that, we thought there could potentially be a $25,000 savings there. Mr. Calafat also expressed earlier this afternoon, after reviewing the electric utility performance, bills that had been paid and the slight drop in the locational reliability capacity charge, that there was some potential savings there. Pushing some numbers around, you're looking at, to get it to 2%, you need about $50,000. So those are two potential sources. I don't know if Robert wants to come up and talk about that. I'll take it out of every cent, out of the appropriations. I'm not going to put more revenues in here.
Okay, that's, yep, that works. Okay. At this point, I open up the comments of the public. Again, reminder, it is 10:40. I will hold you to three minutes, and we'll go from there. Mr. Cerciello and then Mr. Harlandputis, so you can line up right behind him.
Sam Cerciello, Park Avenue. Wow. Politics is a nasty thing, boy. This was a rough, I got absorbed, it just took place tonight, but, you know, we got to stop with this Republicans and Democrats. Just so happens that we got to do what's best for Madison. And about a year or so ago, I was the only one who voted against hiring an assistant administrator. So make sure we don't hire one, maybe we don't need an assistant administrator. Well, anyway, I want to talk about accountability, the way we do business and the process. You know, we're looking for $1,000 here, $2,000 here, $3,000 here, $15,000 here, but the way we do business, I'm going to talk about, when I specialize in construction, at the last, the way we do business. For example, when we put together a job, we come up with a price, and the price is as high as it could be. It doesn't have to be that high. Contractors find this out, and they know we want to spend, for example, we want to spend 3/4 of a million dollars down Lincoln Place. Job's only worth a half a million dollars, but the contractors know that we want to spend a half, 3/4 of a million dollars. Doesn't make sense to me, but I guess it's the law. It doesn't make sense, some of these laws. Maybe we ought to try to change some of the laws. That's why we're in the situation we're in. I gave a couple examples last meeting with the safety building. We hired a consulting company, Gilbain, gave him a half a million dollars. He was supposed to be the overseer. Never flashed the roof. They hired an inspector, and never flashed the roof, the windows leaked. And then we gave the bonding company $2 million to finish the job, it was totally, I mean, you're talking about nickels and dimes here. You're letting thousands and thousands go out with these construction jobs. Then you take Lincoln Place, okay? Do we need the bump outs? I bet you no bump outs in the island in the middle of Lincoln Place and those four bump outs, plus we lost four parking spaces. Do we need to spend $80,000, $100,000 for bump outs in an island? Did we, did we have to have a full-time inspector to watch him rip out a sidewalk? He stays there eight hours? Doesn't make sense to me. We waste a lot of money in construction. North Street Pump Station, we had a contract for $400,000, we were going to spend it. The guy never did a pump station. He had no business even getting the job. If it wasn't for me and somebody that's in the business, he would have been down there making a mess down there. And I agree with Rob, the most important thing we got to do is fix these pump stations. That's a must.
30 seconds. Sorry, I've got to hold it to three minutes.
It's, it's, it's the way we, there's got to be accountability, okay? What I see in other words, as a construction guy, if I came to your house and there was something wrong or some material was wrong, as in the business, and you, nobody knows, you know, like as far as the six, seven people here, none of you's had, for example, those pavers.
All right, Sam, not that I'm cutting you on the pavers, but it's three minutes, and I got to hold you to it.
Yeah, I'll see you next month.
Yep. Liaison to the people. We'll see you next. Tom? And then Tom Bittinger?
Three minutes?
Yep, three minutes.
Can I buy somebody else's minutes?
Nope, sorry about that.
You want to give yours? I'm not a public person. Oh, sorry, you are. When you leave the room. I actually came here to support the library. I'm glad that you made a decision.
And that's your...
Oh, Tom Harlandputis, 27 Palmroy Road. I came here to support the library. I'm glad that the council found a way to continue to budget the library. It's an important asset, extremely important asset in town, which you guys all know and you agreed to acknowledge here in front of the public. I also am glad you're going to find a way to support the community house. It's another important asset that we've all used, 65,000 people a year. I wasn't going to get up and say anything until this meeting turned in this direction, which I can't believe that this Board of Directors for our town and our businesses handling a matter that's so important and so delicate in such an unprofessional way, in my opinion. You know, in the private world, I can't imagine, unless there was, there was really something that was done inappropriate by our director, who's Mr. Cody, he would be pushed out from his position. I haven't seen anything except for positives. I recall, and I'm not 100% sure, but when we were creating the position for assistant borough administrator, a few of you were here at the time. I believe that you all voted in favor of creating the position of assistant borough administrator because you saw a need for the team, because the two of them could work very well together to bring positive results to the town. And we know that they have. And now you're going to be penny wise and pound foolish to save $100,000. So you're telling everybody that we're going to have a 50% increase in our taxes? What does that mean? That's not, that's not the way to express it. Are we going to go from spending $100 a house to $150 a house? Is that the difference? Don't scare people and tell them we're going to have a 50% tax increase. What does it mean anything? I'm tired of those scare tactics. This is the way that you think that you should govern how we live? You've been elected to work for us and to work on our behalf in the best way. So all of a sudden, you're going to throw Jim under the bus unless he really knew about what was going on, which I don't think he did, and you're taking the best thing that we've had in this town. He's helped you and you and you, all of you, for the last few years that you've been in this office. I'm sure that his knowledge has guided all of you to make decisions. And now to save us $100,000, you want to vote tonight to kick him out? I'm embarrassed. I am. I'm thinking about moving out of here now, the way that you're acting. And you don't want good people to leave this town, or maybe you do. And if this is the way you're going to treat him, then a lot of people aren't going to want to stay here. So I think that you should rethink this because it's a mistake. He saved all of you. How hard did he work with you to get that MRC project to work? How hard did he work? How hard did he work with the MRC committee to make that happen? A tremendous way to find financing to get us to buy that property so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers any money. That's how it was sold to us. And I know that he worked very hard to make that happen. So don't discount that. Don't, don't treat us like we don't know what's going on. Because this is not the way to make these decisions.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Yeah, we, no, 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 this is, please, please, no flapping and, no clapping, and this is not the time to get into any give and take. If any particular council member wants to respond, you can do it directly to the comments. Next.
When somebody addresses me, I'm looking at me, you're telling me I can't defend myself verbally? Are you kidding?
I don't, I don't think a defense is necessary, but thank you. All right.
Uh, I find it difficult to get up here after the last few minutes. Uh, I'm Thomas Bittenger, 20 Rolling Hill Court, and I also happen to be president of the Board of Trustees of the Free Public Library of the Borough of Madison. I am glad that you, as a governing body, have decided to continue to, uh, support the library as a borough service, for which you, as a governing body, provide the funding that makes it possible for over 120,000 people to walk through its doors every year. And that's not including the number of people that use the Chase Room, which would be approximately another 30,000 people. Uh, for the public's benefit, since they have absolutely no contact, you have a sheet in front of you, I'll just let them know that the library's budget is roughly $1,004, of which 15% comes from contributions and gifts, 5% is earned in state, and 80% comes from the tax support of the, uh, the borough. Uh, payroll and benefits account for over 80% of that cost. 10% goes for our collection, a dis, very, very low number, and it would be even lower if it were not for the friends raising money. Uh, and 10% for all the other expenditures. Uh, the library obviously does not have a taxing or borrowing authority, which you only have. We have to work with a balanced budget, as I think you recognize. Uh, as we explained several weeks ago, the contribution of electric and water is an extremely important factor in keeping that budget balanced. Uh, the, I guess the only, please, I don't know the mechanics of how the budget works. I just ask you to definitely include in the borough operating budget, the continuance of the support, as you have indicated tonight. Uh, one last comment, I believe this body recognizes that there are a number of people who have appeared here tonight as citizens and taxpayers who support the library. And considering the lateness of the hour and without having everybody get up and use their three minutes, I would suggest, uh, Mr. Mayor, that if they just actually just stand up and indicate their support, then maybe that will allow them to go home.
So, normally you don't do this, but if anyone wants to say ditto to Tom, stand up for a second.
Ditto.
All right.
Thank, thank you very much, okay.
Thanks, thank you.
And that's, that saves us from many people coming up to the microphone to speak.
Mr. Mayor, may I, if, if I might, according to the bylaws, you do have the power to, um, ask a speaker to refrain from direct engagement with, uh, a council member. And so while I agree with you, it's not appropriate to argue back and forth if in fact, though, you know, someone is challenging, you, you, you have that power, so.
Yeah, so any, 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 any future speakers, please, um, keep, keep your comments, um, on topic and not direct it to anyone in particular. Thank you very much, Mr. Cattellinella.
Model U.N.
Hi, Lynn Norris, 14 Niles Avenue. Um, this was an interesting session. I haven't been here in a long time, but I wanted to, uh, one, express my support of the library, ditto. Number two, I came here tonight to say, obviously, we have very difficult choices to make going forward. Um, I thought about the things that I like to live by in my life, and I look at the budgets that are set out, either for ourselves personally, our town, our governments, and we need to think about resiliency for this town, self-sufficiency and sustainability. The gentleman back here who spoke about the source, dear God, they need to be a priority in this town and we need to address it. The electric meters that we're looking at replacing, do they need to be a priority this year? I don't know if they do or not. Maybe we can put them off a year or two. Um, we need to look forward. You spoke about our AAA rating, and yes, I've done a tremendous amount of reading over the past few years about what has gone finance, on financially in this country. And we are standing on the cusp. We are in a depression right now and we may potentially go deeper into one with what's happening in this country. We need to work together. We need to work hard to make sure that this town, this town is the same town that we all love and that we want to continue to live in. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Paul?
Excuse me, voice isn't too good tonight. Um, Paul Logier, 31 Chelsea Court. Um, it's really difficult to assess a budget when it's already 10, two months into the year, almost three. But I'd like to go back to the beginning of the presentation and remind us about what we haven't seen tonight and what we haven't been told about the borough's finances. We haven't been told how much cash the borough has now. We haven't been told how much cash the borough will have at the end of this year. We have not discussed the budgets in the capital accounts, to my knowledge, in the public meeting. So there is this big sort of black hole that we're talking about preserving, which is our surplus, yet nobody has told us what our surplus is. The second point I'd like to make is that after spending about 30 years in the investment banking business, I do know a little bit about borrowing money, having helped people probably borrow $50 billion or so. However, a AAA rating is an arguable merit and value for this, for this borough. I mean, we could argue that we're the 10 best, or I could sit there and make a pretty good argument that we're the 10 most stupid, uh, boroughs in the, in the state, because having a AAA ma, rating may save you a little bit of money, but I cannot evaluate that statement if the people on the finance committee will not tell me going out one, two, three, five years, how much they're going to borrow. So if I, if I may multiply a half a percent times zero, because I'm not borrowing anything, this preservation of a AAA bond rating is worth absolutely nothing. Okay? But no one here in this council is telling us what the real portend of this budget is for the upcoming years. And what it looks to be is, well, a Hail Mary on the electric utility. And if the electric utility doesn't come back to the level of profitability that it was able to achieve before, in a period before deregulation, then we're just, to use the much overused phrase, kicking the can down the road. But I would suggest that this council start putting together some sort of three-year plan that they're willing to discuss with the citizens sometime before, 20 minutes before a meeting, or before someone gets up with a PowerPoint presentation, so that people can look at it and think about it and think if it's building toward mutual goals that we can agree upon. This business of arguing about $20,000 or $30,000 in a meeting like this for a council that has caused its surplus to go down approximately $25 million in the last five years is nonsense.
And one thing we can make sure we do when the budget is introduced, or probably better when it's introduced so people understand, is, uh, we, we typically do a budget in, in brief and have charts so that everyone understands what the final budget means, and we'll, uh, make sure we cover all the reserves and pockets and surpluses and so we have a better understanding. It is, um...
Mayor?
Just about 11 o'clock, so...
Yeah. Mayor, may I suggest that many of the exhibits that Paul was looking for, we actually discussed many of them at prior council meetings. We should really put that up on RoseNet for those of you who didn't attend the prior meetings who have opportunity to look at them.
Yeah, i- i- it is all up there and then as we do everything on the final budget, we'll make sure it's up there, so. Anyone else wishing to be heard? We've got time for just, uh, I'll take three more people. Mr. Harrington?
Is it 11 o'clock? Mayor, motion to extend the meeting to 11:15?
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone else that, uh, to expiate things, anyone else wishing to be heard, please line up so we can, uh, okay.
I don't know, Mr. Logier, but I think we're soulmates. As you know, I've been all over this budget and I've had...
Can you please state your name for the record?
Oh, Tim Harrington, 2 Crossgates Road.
Thank you.
I've spent nearly 50 years doing financial numbers. I've worked with several cabinet members of different presidents, a former Federal Reserve Bank Chairman. The way this meeting was handled tonight was most inappropriate. There's an old saying that George Steinbrenner maybe has resurrected himself. I've heard this used the other way, but when the team is winning, the coach doesn't get fired. We have a lot of problems in this town, but they're not caused by Mr. Cody or Mr. Bennett. I've worked long enough around here to know both of them are highly competent, and right now, the least we need to do is what we've just done. And there's lots of ways to handle it, but the George Strein, Steinbrenner method is one of the worst. This could have been done in some other fashion. There was nothing about 100 or 200,000 on a $20 million budget, ignoring what goes the Board of Education, just going to make or break my taxes or anybody else's taxes in this town. I am shocked, as a former person was, at the way this is handled. There's a lot better ways, and I've been in corporate executions, you can believe me. I know how things operate, and this was not the right one.
Thank you. Janet?
Janet Alaco, 25 Greenwood Avenue. Um, and I just want to, first of all, I'm Director of the Madison Community House. I just want to say that I appreciate everything that the council has considered tonight as far as continuing in some way to assist us. Um, my biggest concern is, um, finding out that it is illegal for you to support us.
Well, in the way we do it.
Right. Uh, it's a very interesting fact, since we have been having this relationship since 1925, which would make it kind of unusual. Um, at any rate, I feel that after listening to what you're able to do for us, that if it's a matter of justification of what we do and who we serve, um, we write monthly reports right now. I can continue to write monthly reports that can come into the borough. We will do whatever it takes because we would like to continue the partnership, because not only do we partnership with the borough, we partnership with all the other nonprofits that are out there. And I think that that's one of the key things that we do as an organization. Um, a pure example is, uh, you know, the Chad and Madison Adult School. You know, they're now holding classes at our place because, again, they've lost, you know, the schools don't want them, nobody wants anybody anymore because they all want to get some money for it. So we will continue to be a partner to many organizations out there, but we would also like to be a partner to the borough, and we will do whatever it takes to be sure that we can continue this relationship.
Thank you.
Janet? I do community affairs. I'll work with you and we can start incorporating that into the monthly meetings.
Anyone else wishing to be heard? If you see none, I close this portion of the meeting. Introduction of ordinances, there are none. Consent agenda resolutions.
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion. Any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
Mayor, I move consent agenda resolutions R72-2012, which need to be read into the record, R73, 74, 75. Um, we have changed R76 and R78, um, in terms of the numbering. Um, R79, 80, 81, 82, and 83, we would have to read, read into record R84 and R85.
Do, do you want to, do we need, do you want to read them to the record or pull out the three that need to be read and get the others? What, what's, uh...
I'm sorry, Mayor, I couldn't hear you.
Um, do you want to read those three into the record or should we do those separately?
I think I can read them into the record.
Okay, now we'll...
Um, R72 is being modified, so why don't I read that first?
Yep.
Okay, R72-2012. Resolution of the Borough of Madison awarding professional service contract to Rogat McCarthy LLC as Bond Counsel and Cleary Giacobi Alfieri Jacobs LLC as Labor Counsel for 2012. Whereas the Borough Administrator has recommended a professional service contract be awarded to Rogat McCarthy LLC to continue to serve as Bond Counsel for 2012. Whereas the Borough Administrator has recommended that a professional service contract be awarded to Cleary Giacobi Alfieri Jacobs LLC to continue to serve as Labor Counsel for 2012. Whereas the Borough solicited receipt of competitive proposals, or requests for proposals. And whereas the Chief Financial Officer has attested to the availability of funds for these purposes as follows, Labor Counsel 2012 Temporary Budget Account Number 105/215 and Bond Counsel 2012 Temporary Budget Account Number 155/215 and Bond Financing to be issued with any fees reflected therein. Now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morrison, State of New Jersey as follows. The Mayor and Borough Clerk are hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Borough professional service contract for Bond Counsel services with Rogat McCarthy for 2012. Such contract to be uniform approved by the Borough Attorney. Number two, the Mayor and Borough Clerk are hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Borough a professional service contract, a professional contract for Labor Counsel with Cleary Giacobi Alfieri Jac, Jacobs LLC for 2012. Such contract to be uniform approved by the Borough Attorney. Number three, the Borough Clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of the adoption of this resolution in the official newspaper of the Borough of Madison within 10 days of its adoption pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-5. That's the resolution.
Okay. And then we have R84, Tax Attorney?
Tax Appeal Attorney.
Yes, thank you.
R84, 2012, Resolution of the Borough of Madison awarding professional service contract to Matthew O'Donnell. As Tax Appeal Attorney for 2012. Whereas the Borough Council has determined to appoint Matthew O'Donnell as Tax Appeal Attorney for 2012. And whereas said services constitute professional services for which a contract may be awarded without the need of competitive bidding pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-5. And whereas the Director of Finance has attested to the availability of funds for this purpose, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morrison, State of New Jersey as follows. Number one, the Mayor and Borough Clerk are hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Borough a professional service contract for Tax Appeal Attorney with Matthew O'Donnell for 2012. Number two, the Borough Clerk is hereby directed, published notice of the adoption of this resolution in the official newspaper of the Borough of Madison within 10 days of its adoption pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-5.
All right, and R85, which is Electrical Engineer Consultant.
R85 is Crane Consulting. Resolution of the Borough of Madison awarding professional service contract to Crane Consulting, is that their name?
Yes.
Crane Consulting as Electrical Engineer Consultant for 2012. Whereas the Borough Council has determined to appoint Crane Consulting as Electrical Engineer Consultant for 2012. And whereas said services constitute professional services for which a contract may be awarded without the need of competitive bidding pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-5. And whereas the Director of Finance has attested to the availability of funds for this purpose, now therefore be resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morrison, State of New Jersey as follows. The Mayor and Borough Clerk are hereby authorized to execute on behalf of the Borough a professional service contract for Electrical Engineer Consultant with Crane Consultants for 2012. The Borough Clerk is hereby directed to publish notice of this adoption of this resolution in the official newspaper of the Borough of Madison within 10 days of its adoption pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-5.
Okay, thank you. So those are the resolutions that have been moved, a second?
You have, we have one more.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, and, um...
Which is the...
Not sure the number, but it's extending professional service contract to Joseph Mazzaka Jr.'s Borough Attorney.
Yeah, I didn't know whether we needed to do that on, as a resolution or just do it under new business to extend, because we also have the auditor, we were going to extend through, uh, March.
So we have a resolution.
Yeah, the...
I, it's up to the council.
Yeah, I, I don't think we need, what, what we were, yeah, we're, I, I think we could just do it on a new business and hold off a resolution to when we have the final decision on the, uh, going to year end. Okay?
So it'll be extended to May 31st.
Correct, yep. So, um, 'cause I don't think you have a second on those resolutions.
A second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Cattellinella?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes. Mayor, I moved, there was one resolution I did not move. So, I moved Resolution 77-2012.
Second that. Discussion?
Can someone explain that to us? Um, the question that I have for this particular one is, um, we are supporting a legislation which could, will create, um, a new authority. Now, from the reading material that we have, it was not very clear to us whether or not, um, there will be impact to the taxpayers overall, not just Madison. Um, it looks like this is modeling after the BPU. As you know, that there, there are certain expenses budgeted for the BPU, which is fairly significant, and I certainly would not be in agreement to create a new authority and burden New Jersey taxpayers, um, because of the creation of this authority.
Um, not, not a concern with that at all. Um, this was a resolution that was passed previously, um, uh, by a previous council last year. It is to allow the members of the Public Power Association of New Jersey to create a authority or company together. Um, we're only asking the council, um, to support the concept of a municipal shared service energy authority and that to encourage the state legislature to pass S one thirty-nine and A two, uh, twenty-three sixteen. Um, it would allow us an option, which we do or don't have to, uh, execute, to join that authority. That authority, um, given the current state of the legislation, could create, um, an, uh, energy consulting service similar to what we purchased with American Power Net. So instead of us purchasing from American Power Net, we can just work in a different kind of way, if we choose, um, with our other municipal, um, electric utilities in the state. It will also, as the legislation is currently written, allow for generation to be created, um, by this entity, and that we could then take advantage of that and have that generation come to the town of Madison. We'd have to still pay for transportation costs, um, to get that energy from wherever it is across the grid to us here, but it would allow us as a, as a, as a, as an authority, um, to purchase and to bond and to, uh, build generation. So let's say we have the opportunity to build down in Vineland because we have no, we, we, we have very little space up here. We could actually, as an authority, build in Vineland, and Madison could choose if we wanted to, to purchase that energy. So tho- those are the main, um, thrust of it, but, um, at the bottom, just note that it says, "We're just urging passage and support." Um, it's op- it's gonna be optional whether Madison actually participates in this or not.
I think the reason, Jim, um, to be concerned is, I thought I read somewhere here, it talked about employees, and it talked about appointment of commissioners, so can we assume that these are not, not, these are non-paying? These are all volunteer positions?
Um, instead of us paying American Power Net to be our manager of our portfolio, um, we could choose to participate in this group, and that group goes out and hires a portfolio manager, and then we would be, um, uh, part of that group and paying for part of that, for part of that bill. Again, it's an optional choice of ours, um, one that gives flexibility in, in, in a couple of different ways. There are multiple states already that have this type of legislation. New Jersey's one of the last. So, um, it would all be up to future councils to decide whether they even wanted to participate in something like this. But the PPA NJ members, um, and administration here think that it's, it's a bill worth advancing and worth considering because it gives the council flexibility.
Who's to participate, we have to pay. If we don't, we're not paying.
Correct.
Okay, that's important.
And if there's a cheaper route, we'd probably go the cheaper route. Any other questions or comments? Uh, roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mrs. Link, uh, Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Any unfinished business? Approval of vouchers.
Public safety, twenty-one thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars twenty-nine cents. Health and public assistance, two thousand seven hundred and sixty-six dollars fifty-seven cents. Public works and engineering, one hundred and thirty-five thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars seventy-two cents. Community affairs, three hundred and one, and one cent, I apologize.
We don't like to pay bills either.
I'm okay, I apologize.
Yep.
Um, finance and borough clerk, two, two million seven hundred and forty-four thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars fifty-two cents. Cold, thank you. Utilities, one million two hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-one and thirty cents. Her total is four million one hundred and thirty-six thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and forty-one cents.
Motion to accept the vouchers as presented.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I apologize again.
Under new business, uh, two things requiring, uh, council confirmation to extend the auditor in Visachia through, uh, March thirty-first, two thousand and twelve. This is, uh, we will come back next month with a resolution authorizing, um, the auditor for the two thousand and eleven audit and to take us to the two thousand and twelve budget, so this just buys us a little more time. Have a, a motion to approve that?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Okay, second one, uh, we are still, um, working on options with borough attorney, so this is to extend, um, Joseph Mazaka's borough attorney. He, on New Year's Day, he was appointed through, um, February twenty-ninth. This will extend it through May thirty-first, two thousand and twelve, and we will continue to, that, with that process. A motion?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Links?
Yeah.
Mr. Catalinello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Any other new business?
Motion to adjourn.
One of those days that you just want to...
Thank you all for your... You're all very inspiring, man.
Good, how are you?